It's kind of an abrupt cutoff for the audio. All right, we're called to order at 2:00 on Tuesday, July 7th. We're going to start out with item B as in Bravo, a moment of silence. Commissioners, Nardi? All right, Mr. Abate, I believe you have an introduction to make, sir?
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. I wanted to introduce Mark Bernath, who is our new Public Works Director. He comes to us from a distinguished career in the Navy, leaving as a commander in the Navy. He's most recently been at the Public Works Director at the U.S. Naval Base in Bethesda, Maryland. He's also done stints for Facilities Management and Sustainment Director in Washington, D.C. and Facilities Director in Virginia Beach, all for the Navy. And he's a P.E., and we look forward to having him here as our Public Works Director.
All right, perfect. Welcome. Good to have you on board, sir. All right, D as in Delta, minutes for approval, March 10th, 2020, March 24th, 2020, April 7th, 2020, April 16th, 2020, and May 7th, 2020. May I have a motion?
So moved.
All right, a motion to approve by Commissioners Nardi. I'll go ahead and second that motion. All in favor of approving the minutes that I read off? Say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, passes. Do we have Commissioner Smith on the line yet?
We do.
Okay, and you are in favor, it sounds like?
Yes.
All right, perfect. Passes unanimously, 5-0. All right, next up, we have E as in Echo, resolution recognizing Five Guys. I do believe we have someone that's in the audience from Five Guys? Come on down if you'd like, or well, technically up. Oh, I'm envious. All right. Commissioner?
I normally don't do a ton of resolutions, but I'm really excited about this one. Okay, whereas the Five Guys Restaurant was opened in 1986 by the Morel family in Arlington, Virginia, and whereas, once the Morel family began offering franchise opportunities in 2003, Five Guys grew to over 1,500 restaurants worldwide, including three locations in Brevard. And whereas, Five Guys believes in taking an active role in its communities by hosting fundraiser nights, sponsoring new sports teams, supporting school events, and offering a mentoring program for people with disabilities. And they've done even more than this. And whereas, with COVID-19 pandemic impacting the traditional senior year milestones for the class of 2020, Five Guys of West Melbourne wanted to do something special to celebrate Brevard County graduates. And whereas District 5, Brevard County Commissioner Christine Nardi suggested to operating partner less than a five guys of West Melbourne that they team up to honor graduates from our high schools in her district by sending a congratulatory letter offering a free milkshake. And whereas, through this community partnership, Five Guys of West Melbourne and the District 5 Commission Office were able to reward the amazing seniors of the class of 2020 who persevered during one of the most challenging moments in history. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida does hereby recognize Five Guys of West Melbourne for supporting Brevard County residents through its generous contributions to the community, done, ordered, and adopted in regular session the 7th day, July, A.D., 2020. With that, I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, I'll go ahead and second that motion. Commissioner Nardi, all in favor of approving the resolution? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0. You got the floor, sir.
Thank you.
Well, I just want to say thank you to Christine and her team over there. And actually, just to say, you guys, it kind of evolved. My general manager over there went out and got the graduation stuff for the people that came in. We had over 350 high school seniors as of today that actually took advantage of that. So it was just kind of, it was kind of nice. And again, Christine, thank you to you and your team for being innovative enough to think of something like that. So I appreciate it.
Thank you for doing it. I got text messages from some seniors that went to school with my children, because I have a graduate this year. And they were very appreciative of that. They thought it was a really neat idea, and they were really excited to send me their photo of them with their milkshake. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Congratulations. All right, we're going to move on to F as in Foxtrot, the consent agenda. Would anyone like something polled?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
What would you like polled?
I would like F-33 polled. I would like to vote no without comment on F-31, as well as F-40. And I'd like to poll F-37 for discussion.
Well, we'll just do a quick vote on F-31. I'll treat that as though it's polled as well. So 31, 33, and what was the other? I apologize.
Sorry, 33, 31, 40, and 37.
40 and 37. All right, we'll go ahead and address them in that order. And then I was asked by Sheriff Ivy with respect to F as in Foxtrot, 41, with John McDonald and EMS. To extend his shout out, I believe they've also donated quite a bit of supplies to BCSO for their use in the jail and elsewhere. So that's all. I'm not going to poll that one. I did want to relay that, though, because the sheriff specifically asked me on that front. So may I have a motion to approve F with the exceptions at this point of F-31, F-33, F-37, and F-40, please?
So moved.
All right, a motion from Commissioner Nardi to approve all of consent, less 31, 33, 37, and 40. All in favor? I'll second that. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, passes 5-0. So let's start Commissioner Tabia with 31. You said you wanted just to vote no without a comment on that? Or was that one you wanted to discuss?
No, Mr. Chair. F-31 and F-40, no without comment on those.
Okay. All right, so with respect to F-31, may I have a motion to approve F-31?
So moved.
All right, I'll go ahead and second that. Commissioner Nardi, all in favor of approving F-31? Say aye.
Aye.
And then Commissioner Tabia in the negative?
Correct.
Passes 4-1. All right, let's look at F-33. What would you like to do with that, Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. County manager put this in the consent, but I think it's, I think it's good we pull it. Kathy Wall, again, came through saving taxpayers countless amount of dollars here with the tax exemption for noncompliance. In the past, we haven't had such a great person that is monitoring this, and I greatly appreciate her hard work and diligence. And I wish this was outside so we could count just how many dollars were saved on this one. But again, thank you for paying such close attention, because, you know, without your watch, I'm sure these companies that are receiving the dollars wouldn't rightfully come forward saying they didn't meet the benchmarks that they had to.
I'd say the other interesting thing with this, it was kind of sad to see from my perspective, every one of the companies listed is in D2 on this. So it is what it is, though. So with that, may I have a motion to approve? All right, a motion from Commissioner Pritchett. I'll second that. All in favor of approving consent item F as in Foxtrot, 33? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0. Are you hearing a little bit of feedback? Okay, now it's gone. I say that's going to throw me off if we've got that for the next couple hours. All right, F-37. Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Career Source, Brevard. I probably should not have read the agenda item. And when I read it, I found unfortunately something pretty stunning. The Agenda Report discussed the organization selection process, states, quote, "The process assures that Career Source Brevard Board will have a representative mix of gender, ethnic, geographic, business sector diversification survey on its Board of Directors." The only problem with this, it's not diverse. It's like a group that fell off the Mayflower. Three of the 24 board members are, have members of a minority group, and the entire slate of new appointments and reappointments, I didn't have to do any work. The Brevard Workforce Development Board did it for me, one of the columns. All seven of them happened to be white. So this is important, because 26, according to the U.S. Census, 26% of Brevard's population is not Caucasian. And more importantly, in 2019, African-Americans saw an unemployment rate twice that of white counterparts. So I would like to reject the candidates and request a report on its efforts to increase diversity to accompany future recommendations and provide us with a slate that is a little bit more representative of the diversity that Brevard enjoys, not just a bunch of white people.
All right, Commissioner Tabia, with respect to the bunch of white people, do we know if the applicant pool was disproportionately white, or if it was something where they really had no options? I'm just trying to get a better grasp, because this is something I didn't anticipate coming up today. So I'm kind of caught in an odd spot. Do we, do we have anyone from Career Source, sir? I'm going to take that as a yes. Maybe? No? You're not here on behalf of Career Source? I was hoping you had the second hat. I didn't know. Yeah, the, I can tell you, Commissioner Tabia, I'd be happy to continue this out of meeting, just to give them the opportunity, but I'm disinclined to vote against it at this point, just because it's, it's an issue that hadn't been put on my radar until this point. I'd be happy to continue it out, though, to give them an opportunity to respond.
Sure, and that would have been a, I'm sorry, it was on consent, and there were 12 other things on here, but when I looked, I pulled the board members up, and it's wonderful that Mr. Abate sits on that. However, again, there are only a couple minorities on that, and that is, again, not representative. So certainly would like to hear back from Career Source and in the future, especially since they were recipients of 3/4 of a million dollars. My suggestion would be that if you have something on the agenda, it's probably worthwhile showing up to said meeting.
Yeah, I don't doubt that, but truth be told, if they were unaware, as I was unaware, that this was something that would be discussed?
It was, it was, it was, it was on the agenda. I mean, it was not a late add.
Fair enough. Mr. Abate?
I can tell you that there's going to be, I am on that board, and I believe there's going to be three additional board members that are going to be coming forward to the board at a future meeting, and I, we will make certain that there is additional diversity included in that. And I've spoken to Marcy, who is the head of Career Source, that they'll be focusing on that.
I appreciate that, sir. And I don't want to put you in an awkward spot, serving as county manager and serving on that board. So I'm going to hold off questions I otherwise would ask to a board member until we have someone available. Is it all right? Let me phrase it differently. Does anyone object to moving it to the next meeting? The next regular meeting, I think two days from now, is a little too soon, perhaps?
I don't mind.
May I have a motion to continue it out to the, whatever? Do we know what the next meeting is after Tuesdays? July 21st? Thank you. May I have a motion to continue it out to July 21st?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Tabia. I'll second that motion to continue F-35 out to July 21st. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, F-35's continued out to July 21st. Pardon me. Yes, F-35. Okay, F-30, F-37?
You need to look at your lights, because we had a couple people that wanted to talk on it.
I apologize.
That's okay.
Commissioner Nardi?
We already voted to continue it. I just, my questions actually were similar to yours, like, what's the selection process? Who applied? Is it open applicant? So those are good questions. I'm glad Commissioner Tabia brought it up.
Thank you. Mr. Pritchett?
Yeah, I was just going to say, it doesn't have any of those details with the applications either, so there's no way I would know what the mix of people's backgrounds are, so.
All right, let's take a look at F-40. Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just registering a no vote without comment.
Perfect. All right, so may I have a motion to pass F as in Foxtrot, 40? All right, a motion from Commissioner Pritchett. I'll go ahead and second the motion to pass Foxtrot, 40. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Tabia in the negative? All right, passes 4-1 with Commissioner Tabia in the negative. And is that all that you wanted to poll, sir?
Yes.
All right. That wasn't too bad, with 40 some odd items on consent. Let's see, public comment? We have got one card that I'm aware of, but I see we may have more. All right, public comment. We only have one for item G as in golf. Peter Carnisale from Viera. Welcome, sir. Good to see you.
Nothing new.
You've got the floor.
Okay, thank you. Basically, I'm Peter Carnisale from Independence Avenue in Viera. And basically, we're back to the old IRCC needs a right-hand turn lane off of eastbound Viera Boulevard onto Independence Avenue into their back gate entrance. That is the only matter of time, not if a rear close collision and collision will occur. Pedestrians, bicyclists, and golf carts traveling the sidewalk are not visible from the road until you are on top of the right-hand turn lane, and then they do not stop for the cars, leaving the residents with the fear of hitting someone if they don't slow down. The short entryway before the gate is another reason the cars make the turn, have to slow down to 10 miles per hour, and sometimes stop on Viera Boulevard before making that right-hand turn lane. IRCC and Heron's Landing and Faith Lutheran Church could also use a traffic light on the corner where Heron's Landing and IRC exit into Viera Boulevard. There is a parallel road, which is Thrasher Boulevard, from Faith Viera to Lutheran Church in Heron's Landing, leading to Heron's Landing exit. So that would make it usable for the church as well as Heron's Landing itself. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, that's all we have for public comment. Amazingly, on this big agenda, at least on the general public comment section. We can't address H as in Hotel until 5:00. Unfortunately, they were noticed for 5:00 o'clock, so we'll have to revisit those at that point. Would you all like to go into I or J next? I? All right, I heard an I. You know what? Have seen any other comment? We'll go for I. All right, she, you got beaten to the punch, I'm sorry. So, all right, I won. CARES Act funding for economic support programs. Mr. Abate?
Yes. As you know, the board directed staff to come back to the board with small program options that could be funded with the CARES Act funding that the board received from the United States Department of Treasury. And so we had put together a small business economic relief task force to look at options that the board could consider. The board had the opportunity to consider two of those options, which we're in the process of implementing after last week's meeting. But we have a couple of options that are still open for board input discussion and direction. And so the first, assuming that the board is going to want to direct staff to establish a small business economic relief program, we want to bring to the board's attention the opportunities that the task force came up with for this particular program. And under that program option, the options, there were three options that, as it relates to grant amounts, that they are suggesting the board consider. One, option number one, or A, would be a one-time grant not to exceed $10,000 for small businesses that have 50 or less full-time equivalent employees. The second option would be to give it a tiered approach for those grants, that it would be a one-time grant not to exceed $5,000 for businesses that have 25 or less employees, and a one-time grant not to exceed $10,000 for businesses that have between 26 and 50 employees. And then the third option would be any other amount that the board wanted to establish, if it wasn't the 10 or the 10 or $5,000 amounts, and the number of employees that would constitute the group that would be eligible under a small business, whether that would be 25, 50, or some other number. So that would be the first area that we would be asking the board to look at. I don't know if we want to deal with that, or if you want to, if we want to go on to the other aspects of the, this particular program, whatever the board's preference is. And I don't know if there are any cards relative to this item that you might want to consider before we go on to other aspects and you start taking votes on it.
All right, we do have three cards on this particular item. I'm happy to address them now, if you all would like. Do you want to do that, Commissioners? All right, we'll go ahead and do that now. Just so folks know where they are in the pecking order, we'll have Janet, it looks like, is that an ABT or ALOT? ABT? How do you pronounce that? Apt. All right, Janet Apt from Coco at first, then Pam Derschka from Titusville, then Stacy Patel from Satellite Beach, in that order. Come on down. And don't, don't bother unless you feel the need to, to repeat the name and the city of residence. Just use all your three minutes for whatever you'd like. Save your time.
Okay, yeah, basically, I'm with the Catholic Charities Advisory Council, and we were interested in the CARES Act funding and how, well, is it all for just small business, or is it going to be for like rent, you know, payments for rent for people that are poor? Or how is the RFP, how is it all being broken out?
I think that's being determined at this point today.
I'm sorry?
I think a lot of that is being determined and discussed.
Okay, so you're going to still talk on the funding?
See you again.
You're still going to be talking about funding?
Yes. I mean, there is, there is a program in place at this point for rent and mortgage assistance for individuals, but in terms of the rest of it, it's all, it's all up for debate.
Okay. Who would be the person that we would talk to?
Us.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, then somebody will probably be in touch with you about this then, from the Catholic charity.
Well, I mean, you still have a couple minutes if you just kind of want to...
I really don't have a whole lot of questions, because I just was hoping you would be talking about some of the stuff that we've been asking questions in our mind, how is this going to happen, and how is that going to happen?
You may have some of that discussion today, I would anticipate.
That's what I'm hoping. All right, thank you for listening.
Fair enough. Yes, ma'am.
Sir, I was just going to say, Ian's here somewhere. We have a set of money that we gave for that purpose. Can you find out how these applications and people help get their mortgage today? Who is that?
Ian Golden. I think I saw, I see Jim's over there. Jim, the gentleman in the jacket will get with you and get you Ian's info. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. All right, Ms. Derschka from Titusville.
Hello.
Welcome.
The, I've referred quite a few people to the CARES Act from Brevard in my involvement with the mutual aid Brevard organization. It's mostly a Facebook group of people that are helping other people and also passing on information. And I have yet to have one person that said they successfully completed the forms and were approved. So it seems like from last, last commission meeting, there were about 50% reported that either had incomplete or were denied. And yet, we see the need on our Facebook group on a daily basis. We're taking groceries to people that might have a few items in their cupboard and have children and, and don't have grocery, you know, gas money, things like that. Rent is backing up on a lot of people, and that's beyond the scope of what we can do in our group. We try to help make sure that they're fed and have a little gas money and do what we can do. But most of the time, we're trying to refer them to the, either the cities in Titusville, Melbourne, different areas that have the grants, and also to the county commission. And it seems like the process is so onerous that they're not able to deal with it. They do have needs, but to fill out all the tax return, you know, somebody told me that they had 70 pages in their document. And another person that I talked to said that they do million-dollar grants that are shorter than what the documentation is that some of the people are required. So I'd like to really look at that. Last I heard, there was about $700,000 was given out, out of 4.4 million, and that's, even that is such a small percentage, less than 1%, or about 1% of the amount that you have. So I think the individuals in our community need more support, and I'd like you to look at the process to see if you can somehow simplify it so that the needs are met more quickly.
I appreciate it, ma'am. And just, you know, a couple thoughts with respect to that. I can tell you that part of the reason, to my understanding, and I can't speak to a particular application that I'm not familiar with, but part of my understanding with, with respect to why the applications are as onerous as they may appear, is the money, if we grant it and it doesn't qualify, the county is on the hook then to reimburse the feds for whatever it is that we give out, which would put us in a wretched situation next year. So I know with respect to this, they're really trying to dot the i's and cross the t's, but, you know, I'll be happy to talk with Ian, and maybe one or more of the other Commissioners may do the same, to see if there's something that we can do to make it a little easier on folks.
And perhaps have more assistance through staff, to be able to guide people through the process, because, you know, I don't have the expertise in that, and, and really, it would be great if there was, was more resource, maybe printing, things like that.
Yes, ma'am. And I'll, actually, if I can get Ian just for a second, and I'm sorry for putting you on the spot, sir, but with respect to the 70 page of docs required for an application, is that pretty typical of what you're seeing, or is that something that's kind of an outlier?
I think, I think 70 pages might be an outlier. I'd have to go back and look. I haven't been actually counting pages on applications. But you are correct. Part of the reason that it is so onerous is because of the requirements from the Treasury Department, that we prove that there is a tie to coronavirus. And we do that in a number of ways. One of the things that's required from the policy that we submitted and the board approved is that there's a 25% reduction in income. So that requires a lot of documentation, bank records, pay stubs, if they have SSI, we need those income letters from the government. You know, there are a lot of different things that factor into that calculation. We have been looking at ways to make the process a little more efficient. There are four items that can't be waived in that policy. It's the tie to coronavirus. It's the 25% reduction. I'm blanking on the other two, but everything else in that policy is eligible for waiver. So we've done some things. We've brought in additional temporary staff to try and help with the process and to help people. As you know, we put the application online. We've cross-trained staff, so we have additional staff who are not typically doing income eligibility, doing income eligibility right now. And so we've done a number of things. One of the things that we've, we've waived is, if you remember correctly, it was three months or $7,200. That was when the eviction moratorium had been in place for three months. So we're not waiving the dollar amount, but we're extending the amount of time, the amount of months, in a regard that you potentially look to get assistance. So we're doing those type of things to try and, again, provide more access to the funds. But there are restrictions on it. There are things that we have to do for income eligibility that we, we just can't do without.
Ian, are you seeing that a good percentage of them are getting denied, or most of them getting, once they're processed, being approved?
Right now, we're running about an 18.5% denial rate. And as I had said last week during the PowerPoint presentation, a lot of that is because there, people are not meeting that income reduction of 25%, or they can't tie to a coronavirus impact. We've actually started expanding what we're talking about as coronavirus impact. We have some people who have come in, and because of closures, they weren't able to apply for unemployment or couldn't get through that system. And so we've given them some leeway to allow for that. We're looking at the fact that we have some people who might have been out on disability, and we've been getting requested, instead of denial, a note from a doctor saying that you can't return to work, not just because of your disability, but because of the disability and the risk from coronavirus. So we're trying to work with people. If we cannot deny, we're not going to deny. But like I said, there are certain things that we can't waive.
Is there a typical turnaround time? I know you may have some outliers.
A lot of the turnaround time is dependent upon the information that they give us. And so if they send us an incomplete application, it could take a couple of weeks for us to go back and forth. And as I mentioned last week, one of the other things that we've done is, unless you're missing three or more of the backup documents, we're actually reaching out to you to try and get you to send that to us instead of, you know, sending your entire application back.
I appreciate it. Any other questions for Mr. Golden? Commissioner?
I can't, telephone mic's on.
That's all right.
So I just want to reiterate, because you're kind of quiet behind your mask. So it's an 18.5% denial rate with the primary, or at least the largest issue being the non-reduction of 25% of their income is the... of 25% of their income is the...
That and the tie to coronavirus.
And the tie to coronavirus, okay. I just don't want any misinformation out there. I just want to make sure, and that's why I spoke with you before the meeting, to make sure that we're getting those funds out. So I'm happy to hear that we've made it a little bit easier of a process by reducing the application size and that sort of thing. So I'd just say, as you said to me that you were going to follow up with us and give us kind of like a screenshot of, a short version of what we've done, just, you know, if you could get that out to all of us, that would be great, because then at least we'd have some data to show people who are asking questions.
I actually do a weekly update for Frank, and I can send, Frank's approval, we can send out that update this week to kind of show where we're at.
Thank you so much.
And I don't want anyone to forget that this is probably the first and only time in my life that I've been accused of being potentially too quiet. So let's mark that in stone somewhere. I think that's an only time thing. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we'll have Stacy Patel from Satellite Beach, and then we did get one more card from Michael Bramson from Altamont Springs. Welcome, ma'am.
So as you know, I moderate a Facebook group with about 10,000 local members, and we provide mutual aid to local families who are experiencing a risk of hunger, homelessness, health concerns, or financial crisis during the COVID epidemic. When Brevard County released the rent and mortgage program, we shared it immediately with our members, hoping it would provide much-needed support, but we're not sure that it's meeting the needs of local people. At last week's commission meeting and today, Mr. Golden reported that nearly 30% of applications had been returned due to missing documents, and that nearly 20% had been denied, so 18.5. Assuming those statistics aren't redundant, that's nearly half of those who are seeking help that aren't getting it. In the past few weeks, I've also done some informal surveys on Facebook, asking residents about Brevard, their experience with the rent and mortgage program. Zero people in our group have replied that they've received assistance from the program, zero. 95 people indicated that they prioritized housing and that they'd been able to keep their housing, but they'd fallen behind on other bills like water. 66 people indicated they needed housing assistance, but they didn't have all the documentation or didn't qualify. Nine people applied without receiving a response in more than a month. Two people were denied, four were asked for additional documentation, one reported her application had been lost. But again, zero reported on either survey in our group that they'd been able to receive the actual help. One woman emailed me to say that her printer had run out of ink, this was the story that Pam had shared, after printing 50 pages, and that she went out and spent $87 on ink so she could print the 70 pages she needed to turn in for the application. These types of documentation or requirements are difficult for anyone, but most of all for the poor. Admittedly, this isn't a scientific sample, but I've been shocked that we haven't been able to identify a single individual who has received assistance from the program, and it makes me wonder what improvements need to be made to ensure folks get the help they need. Orange County has allocated nearly, they've allocated 36.5 million, or nearly 15% of their CARES Act funding, to provide $1,000 stimulus checks for local residents with a much simpler application process. They've received tens of thousands of applications. Brevard has allocated only 4.4 million, or about 4% of our CARES Act funding, to provide direct assistance, and we've collected less than 500 applications, as of Mr. Golden's last report, and we've managed to spend less than $700,000. Please simplify the process and expand the funds allocated for direct aid to local residents to ensure funds can be quickly and effectively distributed to those who need them most. Families across Brevard are hungry tonight and are giving themselves ulcers, wondering what they're going to do to keep their homes, to pay for transportation, to work, to afford their medications, and to feed their kids. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, next up, we have Michael Bramson, or should I say Lieutenant, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Lieutenant Bramson.
Yes, but today it's President.
President Bramson?
Yes.
All right. Sounds like a good title.
Yeah, I like it.
You got the floor, sir.
Thank you very much. Mike Bramson, Altamont Springs, President of Brevard County Firefighters Union. I apologize for my absence the last couple of meetings. The last couple of weeks have been relatively intense out in Brevard County, as well as the rest of the nation. And I'm here to speak in favor of a lot of the things that you are doing with the CARES money. But something that's very specific to my line of work as a firefighter and for my brothers and sisters in Brevard County Fire Rescue and the cities within its boundaries, I'd like you to consider all these wonderful presentations that go to PPE. My main concern is where we're going in the next 60 days. We're going to be looking at the next event that's predictable, which is the heart of the hurricane season. And you know, we have shelters, we don't know what's going to happen. Anything can happen, a lot of variables. And so I would like to take up the place, came up here to talk to you in support of all the citizens and visitors of Brevard County, holy cow, that's close, that are concerned about certain things. I'm not saying that PPE is specifically for COVID, even though that's a requirement of the CARES Act, but I understand that other aspects of the CARES Act that relate to COVID may or may not be considered for those with cancer, other ailments, other concerns, businesses, so forth and so on, all the things you heard last meeting. Something that's a little bit more selfish and closer to home about that type of information is how it affects the firefighters, the first responders, the frontline people, the nurses and doctors in the field. We need to kind of consider that if the mental stability of our citizens is high, the support for our citizens and the visitors and the commerce is high, then people feel good, they recover better, and all the stuff you see on TV happens. So I think the PPE was pretty important. I wasn't here to speak about that last time, I apologize, but that was just one thing I wanted to add, and this was unfinished finish. I reserve any, the last minute for any comments.
Any questions? Speak now or forever hold your peace?
I'll be back. Thank you.
Just thank you for all you guys do. We appreciate you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
It's good seeing you, sir. All right, that's it for comment on this particular item. So Mr. Batte, I'll hand it back over to you to pick up again.
Okay, so at this point, I don't know if the board wants to have a discussion on the grant amounts and what you'd want to do under a small business economic relief program with providing grants. We will go over a variety of other things, including eligibility, how much should be funded for the program, and administration of the program, but I don't know if we want to have some board dialogue about the grant amounts that we discussed a little earlier in the meeting.
Perfect. First, we'll hear from Commissioner Tabia, then Commissioner Pritchett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And we were given some options, and I broke it down, when we get to everything from charities to individual nonprofits to for-profit companies. But I think the larger option, and one we were surprisingly not presented by this small business group, was to be responsible with the money and not necessarily spend it immediately. Commissioner Smith pointed out on 4:30, he said, quote, "This money really doesn't exist," and he's absolutely correct. This money is borrowed from China and will be paid back, not by us, not by these businesses, but by our grandkids and our great-grandkids. According to a report by the Department of Treasury, China holds more than $1.3 trillion in U.S. securities. Our national debt currently sits at more than $26 trillion. The same time, Commissioner Smith also pointed out that these funds could lead to a slippery slope, quote, "And everything, and, sorry, and everyone will want a piece of the pie." We're about to find that out. It looks as though this is exactly what is happening, and he said, "We should use some fiscal restraint." He further said, "I don't want to see this money being spent just because we have it." Could not have said it any better. As a county, we are forced to balance our budget. If we use this money unnecessarily just because it is available, then we are no better than the Washington politicians that we consistently run against. However, the way this program is structured, it's fairly unique and presents us with the opportunity to do the right thing. If this money is not spent by the end of the year, it can be spent somewhere else, sorry, it cannot be spent somewhere else. It will just go back to the National Treasury and not increase the national debt any faster than it currently is. Maybe our good, the reason that this is necessary is because the government action shut down these businesses. I find this false. Many businesses were not forced to shut down. An example would be liquor stores. Other adapted quickly to changing conditions. For example, Intercoastal Brewing Company began a delivery service. You may see where my examples lay. Some businesses had the foresight to purchase business interruption insurance that included pandemics. If we handed out money to businesses that did not, then we are penalizing ones that took precautions for these type of occurrences. Commissioner Lober has pointed out, sorry, Chairman Lober has pointed out, the unprecedented expenditures that have already been distributed and are set to continue. An example would be the $660 billion Paycheck Protection Program, which was recently extended because there are more than $130 billion still available. Recall that $1,200 has been handed out to every American that earns below a certain threshold, plus $500 for children. Anything else, we should just let the market determine. An economist by the name of Joseph Schumpeter, the one thing I do remember from my economics class, talked about creative destruction. He talked about how certain times change markets. J.C. Penney's Sears, they've seen decrease in their market share as Amazon has increased. Lest, I don't think it's our responsibility to continue to float these type of businesses. So I would like to offer a fourth option, one that, again, surprisingly was not offered by this small business group, that we hold the money and we don't pick winners and losers in this, and we return the money to the federal government, so our kids, our grandkids, and if we continue spending like this, our great-grandkids aren't required to pay off the debt that we settle them with.
All right. Commissioner Pritchett.
I hate having to follow that, but, you know, you know what, you're right. As far as, you know, we had the banking mess, it greatly affected the value of our dollar. Milk went from like $2 a gallon to five. And here's the problem, they've already sent this money out there, it's 109 million to our community. If we're the ones that send it back, it's going to be like a dot in the ocean as far as affecting the value of a dollar overall for the nation. But Commissioner Tabia, you're right, and theoretically, if this wasn't going on everywhere, I'd be with you, because all this money we've dumped into the economy, we're going to pay for this later. It's going to affect you on your incomes later and how much money you make. I mean, if you make $50,000 a year, in about a year, it's going to have the same value of maybe $30,000 a year. There's no way this is not going to happen, but it's already there. So as far as that, we have the money now. My objective, when we do this with whatever you guys come up with, when we come to a consensus, is to maybe get the money out there as quick as we can, and here's why, because it's going to stimulate the economy. If we get $109 million out there in the economy, it's going to help get things stimulated and rolling. And so I looked at all the options here of the information that came in, and I took the amount of money, and I think it's going to help maybe 3,000 businesses if you did the $10,000 max. But on this, as far as the PPP program, they set it up with a lot of criteria with the paying the rent and the utility. So I think I would be comfortable, if we look at this, and I don't mind a business up to 50 full-time, again, this is if they've got no other funds, you know, we're going to keep that clawback if they get reimbursed and they have to give this money back so we can get it out to another business. But I think not to exceed the 10,000, but they have to prove these expenses as far as rent and utilities, interest on mortgage, not the mortgage payment, because that's something they're going to own at the end of time, but just the interest part on that mortgage. And again, if they didn't, if they were able to keep their employees, and again, this has to always fit in with the Corona criteria, it has to be tied to Corona, and they have to have lost at least 25% of their income. So I'm probably good with it for not to exceed 10,000, but if they only had 6,000 in expenses, I don't want to give them 10,000. It has to really cover these expenses. And I would really like us to be able to have staff come up with that criteria so that they can make sure it's going to as many businesses as we can to get them up and stimulate it. You know, even with the PPP program, it's fascinating, but it has brought more money into the economy here, and I think that's helping us right now. And when these monies run out, we could be in some trouble here in the next couple of months. But if we keep businesses running so that the employees keep working, I think that's a really good thing. So that's where I am, guys. Wherever you guys want to land, I'm open for it, but I think all of these suggestions are pretty good, so.
Okay, I don't see any lights, so I'll jump in here on a couple of things. You know, first off, and I want to echo a little bit of what Commissioner Pritchett stated, I agree in the sense that if it were just Brevard, and it was just this county bearing the burden in the future, I would agree with you 100%, Commissioner Tabia. But when you look at asking us not to use the money that they've allocated for Brevard, it would be like a married couple without kids that's making 100, and let's say 195,000 a year, not cashing the $2,400 stimulus check. I can tell you, you know, I file married without any kids, and, you know, we make a decent income, we didn't return the 2,400 that came. We didn't. To say that maybe we should have, so that it would somehow benefit, you know, future generations, that's great. You have maybe a minuscule fraction of a percentage that go for that, if any. I really, I'm not aware of any municipality or any local government, I should say, actually counties, counties I should say, counties or states that have returned CARES Act funds or plan on returning it. It's admirable, I understand where you're coming from, but I don't think that Brevard County with our 602,000 residents or whatever we're up to at this point is going to make a bit of difference at a national level. I don't know that it would be a penny per person if you divvy it out, I'm not sure. Bottom line, though, you know, I think we have to do something. I think that this is a very extenuating set of circumstances. I'm not generally thrilled with entitlement programs. I don't really view this as an entitlement program, because I don't think there's any entitlement to it. But I think the question is how we stretch that money to make the most impact. With respect to freeing up more money, I think there are other opportunities, and I'm not saying I'm in stone about this, but giving money to the three major hospital groups when we know that they're not at any risk whatsoever of going belly up, I don't know that we need to give them what they're asking for, even if it is technically reimbursable and technically complies. It's not going to hurt our residents to withhold that money from them, and that's going to free up an eight-digit number. We could potentially free up 10, 15 million if we largely cut the hospitals out, or we limit them to some more reasonable figure than, you know, 7 million or 5 million. I'm not, I'm not, you know, set by any means, as I said in stone, about doing that, but there are other ways to stretch this money. You know, I do have a couple of concerns with respect to the proposal as it's listed. You know, the third bullet item on the second of the four pages that make up the cover sheets, it talks about a business has to have been in operation at the end of February 2020 and currently be in business. I don't know if a business started February 29th of this year, that that's necessarily the best business to invest the money in. And I don't know how many businesses that started, let's say, February 27th, 28th, 29th, would really exist, and of those that exist, how many would apply for this? But I do have concerns with saying essentially anyone that was in existence at that point in time is eligible for, you know, up to 10 grand potentially, depending on the number of employees. So I do have concerns about the date. I don't know that there's a perfect date, but, you know, I think more than, going back further than February 29th would be appropriate. The other thing, and I guess we don't have to address this right now, but it is a concern for me, at least moving forward, is cutting out the nonprofits. If they're employing people and/or providing a valuable community service that especially, especially if it otherwise would be assumed by the government, I don't know that I want to cut them out. If someone's getting a check and it's from a nonprofit entity, I don't know that that's any worse than getting it from a business. So I really, you know, I don't necessarily feel warm and fuzzy cutting them out. If we pass this as-is with respect to excluding them, I might be able to live with that, as long as I know that we'll revisit looking at nonprofits, but I would much prefer to consider having them included in it, and that's where I'm at. Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, I agree with that. I think just rolling the nonprofits into these grants, and then whoever we pick to administrate it, that they can consider that. On hospitals, since you brought that up, I agree, the one you brought that's ownership out of town, but our other two hospitals are local, and they are losing a lot of money. So I don't mind that staying in the mix, if, I know you always, you know, look things over real good. But the Health First, they're big, and they've lost a lot of funds, and they don't have a choice, they have to stay open, they have a lot of employees. And Parish, you know, they're not a private hospital, they're public, they're actually owned by the county. So I know Health First will have some struggles too, but I would like to keep that open for both those being in the mix. But the public hospital, actually, if they can't, you know, pull through it, they actually would tax the citizens because it's owned by the county. So if you would just keep that in your head as we're moving through when they turn in reimbursements, because my heart's really going out to them with all the extra costs that they've both had to incur to do that, so.
I'll just put out for full disclosure, I love Parish. Health First obviously has a huge presence in District 2.
Yeah.
So there is a bias on my part in their favor. And Parish, in dealing with them in the context of this pandemic, I really didn't have any occasion to deal with them prior to this, they've been nothing but honorable and decent. So I'm not saying that I want to cut them out, I'm just saying that if we need to stretch the money and we can't make use, enough good use of what we have, it's a discussion point, that's all. I'm not, I mean, if you asked me to cut them out today, I wouldn't cut them out today, but it's something that I'm mulling over as a possibility. Commissioner Znardi? Commissioner Zardine?
Maybe we should have, I'm sorry, maybe we should have just kept them in the medical reimbursements as they come in, but they're both great hospitals, and I just appreciate them a lot.
Yeah, I would never take away any, you know, any credit from the good that they've done, and like I said, especially with Parish up in your neck of the woods, they've been nothing but honorable in my dealings with them. Commissioner Zardine?
I had a feeling the hospital issue may came up, and Ms. Bentley and I have had many discussions over the last few days over this. I would just ask if the board is okay with it, any vote or any movement forward on hospitals, reimbursement or otherwise, that we have, I have to submit a request to the Commission on Ethics. I called them today, because, you know, I'm an employee of Health First. And although, you know, one could easily say it's not going to, I'm not going to have a financial gain, whether or not their expenses are reimbursable, once we tie in that business relationship with them receiving funds from the county, that changes things because the business I work for is directly benefiting from the county. There's a couple of different statutes this falls under, but I don't want to not vote on it, I don't want to abstain. And the Commission on Ethics attorney told me specifically, "Don't do this, don't do anything without an opinion." So if we vote on anything today that has to do with the hospital, I don't know what we do, because I can't abstain, because I could be in violation, and I can't vote because I could be in violation. But we do have time, rather than trying to get an AG opinion, a Commission on Ethics opinion is just as solid, just squared away, they can investigate it for, you know, for clarity, because again, there's a lot of moving parts to this. And although obviously it would not change my status there, I've been an employee of Health First since 2008, and I work for the medical group, which is tied to the corporation. So I just, we just want to make sure everything's clean.
I don't plan on putting you in that spot, just to be as forth as I can.
If the board's okay with it, I'll have Ms. Bentley do that request.
Yeah, unless someone objects.
With the circumstances.
I think you can, you can take that as a thumbs up.
Yes, yes. I'll be happy to write in a question for the Commission on Ethics.
Correct.
All right, Commissioner Pritchett, is that an old one? I don't know if I cleared it out.
I just wanted to ask, are we trying to solidify how we're going to run the grant amounts right now? Is that our question right now we're trying to answer?
We're looking for direction on the Small Business Economic Relief Program. So we were looking at it from the amount of the grant, but the second issue that came up is, should it be expanded to also include nonprofits? Which this program, as it was sent to the board, did not do that, but obviously we can modify it to do that if that's the board's will.
Okay, so I would be in favor of that.
It's my preference, too.
So.
So if you want to, Commissioner Smith, please.
Yeah, I would just like to weigh in because Commissioner Tabaya has already expressed the views I had initially, and I've spent a lot of time looking at these. And I find that myself, and I really feel that my fellow commissioners, we're in an extremely difficult position, in my view, because no matter how much we stress, no matter how much we try and make this work, there's way to, there's no way to make these grants equitable, because there's so many different variables for each and every one of these companies. And the amounts we're talking about, boy, $10,000 to one company might be a lot, $10,000 to another company is hardly worth them filling out the paperwork. So I don't know how we do this, but I'm certainly open to all thoughts and ideas. And I agree, I think we should keep the hospitals in the mix as well as the nonprofits.
All right, I don't have any more lights. I don't know if someone has a motion they'd like to make, one way or the other. Commissioner, oh, Commissioner Tabaya, be Commissioner Pritchett to the punch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I anticipated not winning this one. I do have some suggestions as we move forward, and I think Commissioner Smith just touched on one of where I wanted to start. I just threw in the average salary of 32,000 and split the difference between 0 and 50 employees. And I looked up, I don't run a small business, but it looks like it salaries a company about, account for about 75%. So that would put, you know, a business of 25 with a, about a million two. $10,000, should they get the full amount, would account for less than 1% of the money that was required to run those businesses. And that's just splitting everything right down the middle. But as we go forward, and to be clear, under no condition will I be voting for this, but I think it can be done in a more responsible way than effectively just getting up in a helicopter and throwing it out of a helicopter, which sounds like is currently the plan. So my questions would be, and I certainly would like done, would like to know if there will be a clawback provision, should a business not succeed after being bailed out? Would applicants be required to waive liability protection to provide personal security in the event their business declares bankruptcy or otherwise does not meet their obligations? Can this money be shelled out? In other words, can they use the money to fund employees and the money they would otherwise have used to fund employees? Could they throw a massive party? What do we tell the businesses that have already folded? What do we tell businesses that don't know about this program and have already expended funds to adapt to the changing requirements? Will there be special provisions for minority-owned businesses? Will companies whose primary operations are outside Brevard County but have a small presence be eligible for these funds? We've required this on county contracts, and I certainly hope that we would, but will we require businesses to comply with E-Verify? Or will we hand this over to businesses that require or survive off illegal labor? And will these funds be distributed throughout the county commission districts proportionally or in a first-come, first-served basis? These are only a few of the questions that need to be addressed, I believe, before, again, we spend, I don't know how much, 30 million bucks. But I certainly would like an answer. I think that our constituents deserve it.
All right, Commissioner Pritchett, then I'll jump in.
Thank you, sir. You know, when the government started doing this back in March, I was amazed, because it was so easy to get the PPP funds. And I think it was a simple application, and they just put the money in your account. Then there was a small business loan you also applied for, and even if you didn't get the loan, they put $10,000 in your account. So I started thinking, what's the reason for doing this? Because this isn't like a regular bank loan, you don't have to show collateral, all that stuff. And what I realized, especially with the stimulus checks, they're trying to get the money into the local economies to stimulate the economy with all this massive amounts of reduction of being able to do trade in business. So I don't think we can look at this as, this is just actually grants, or I think actually the federal government's given it to us to get it out to the local community, because they're trying to stimulate the economy. So on that, if you look at the way that they did it, because there's no way we're going to be able to get all that criteria done and still get the money into the local economy, there's no way. So what we have to do is do our best to try to get in as many small businesses' hands. Is it going to be perfect? No. Is there going to be some people that maybe don't spend it the best? Maybe not, but it's still going to get the money into the local economy. And that's the way I have to kind of look at it, because this is really more or less stimulus funds they gave us that are affected by people going through the COVID or 25% reduction in income, and that's going to have to be the criteria as the county sets that up. So when we do this, and I do agree, I think there is clawbacks, if they get reimbursed by any other entities, they're going to have to put this back so they don't have double monies going to the same areas. So I think actually figuring out the grants, the easy part, but then giving it over to the people that are going to have to figure out who the grants go to, that's where we're going to have to get people really involved that know what they're doing with businesses. So, Mr. Chair, I know you're getting ready to talk, but when you're ready, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion on this part, to go ahead and do a one-time grant not to exceed 10,000 for businesses that have up to 50 full-time employees. Again, even when we got the small business grant, it wasn't going to pay all of the bills, but it's just a little bit of help to help get money into the economy and to the businesses. So again, if they don't spend 10,000 on their utilities and whatever, we don't give them 10,000. It's enough to help them get through, and it won't cover everything, but it's a little bit of help. And it's just another tool that we're using, because all those other funds have gone out, and we've got these funds we're helping to get out, too. And I think that's been our primary purpose with these funds, as we were giving them to, from the federal government. So, sir, again, that will be my motion after, when you're ready.
And I know the clerks are going to kill me for this, I'm going to ask you to consider perhaps amending your motion before you make it. Oh, I guess it wouldn't be an amendment, because you haven't made it yet. But a few ideas, and it's not a take it or leave it by any means, but I think with respect to nonprofits, if we have, okay, if you have nonprofits included in there, I think that's a good thing.
I was just going to start with number one.
Okay. Yeah, let's try to hash out a little more of it if we can. So nonprofits, I'd like to see nonprofits. I don't know if there's a big problem with having an E-Verify requirement, but it makes sense to me. I like Commissioner Tabaya's suggestion with that. If there's some major issue that staff is aware of, I'm happy to strike that, but it would be nice. The other thing, and it's not make it or break it for me, but this thing where it says on the third bullet that the business has to have been in operation at the end of February 29th, or, I'm sorry, the end of February 2020, which would be the 29th, I'd like to back it up at least a month or two. I mean, it just seems to me that someone could incorporate or register, January 1st's fine. And then the other thing, and the clawback, I'm fine with that, if they get the money from another entity, I'm fine with going with a little A for the one-time grant not to exceed 10. We've got to figure out a dollar amount, though, and I really am reticent to spend absolutely everything that we have available, because this has to last us through the end of the year, at least how things are said.
How much do we have in there?
We've got, what, 39, what's the number, Mr. Batte? About 39 million?
No, 34 million.
I'm sorry, 34 million.
Yeah.
I'm fine, if you want to pick a number amount, we can get started with.
How about seven and a half?
Seven and a half million?
Yeah, I think that gives them enough to get rolling, we'll see. Is that reasonable? I mean, I can.
Or do you want to do half?
Mr. Batte?
If I may.
Please, sir.
And in light of some of the dialogue you've started to have, we'll be talking about some other aspects of this and the administration and determining, you know, who's going to be qualifying, you know, what will get someone qualified for that 10,000 eligibility, that is in, some of it is in the eligibility criteria, so we're going to be talking about that next. But what I wanted to mention was, in the report, which many of you, if not all of you have already read, and, but everyone in the audience may not have had an opportunity to look at that, we did talk about the administration to a certain degree. And so what I wanted to reflect upon was the options that are available and how staff is planning to proceed, so I'd like to explain that to the board. And if you want us to do it differently, I'll tell you what some other options are. And so what we were planning to do was, when we get this application, and we're going to have it online, and people can apply online for, trying to keep it as simple as we can, but within the eligibility criteria, so they can prove what they need to prove, we've already been told by Treasury that we are going to be audited, and we have to keep these records for five years, because they're going to be coming back to see, everyone that we gave money to, did they really qualify and should they have qualified, so under the criteria that we established. So what we're planning to do is to keep it open after advertising it to various sources for, you know, a certain period of time, a week or two, that we would open it up on the application online and let everyone apply that's going to apply during a certain period, perhaps one week, perhaps two weeks for them to apply. We would then close the application process, and that's the time that we would start going through each application to determine whether or not they provided the documentation to support. For example, one of the things will be, you know, how much was your lease during the period you were closed, or what inventory did you lose, or, you know, the salaries that you had to pay while you were closed. They show that documentation, that will help us determine what amount up to 10,000 that they could possibly qualify for. We would do that for all the applications, we would then know from 0 to 10,000 how much each application is eligible for. We would then look at the amount that the board has allocated, if you say 7.5 million, and we would determine, based on the number of applications that are eligible and how much they're each eligible for, how do we distribute that 7.5 million? And we would do it on a proportionate basis of the number of applications that are eligible and the amounts that they are eligible for against that 7.5 million, and then we would distribute the funding that way. That's how plant, staff intends to move forward on that. It's been done in other areas, we've done it in Housing and Human Services, I talked to Ian about it, so we've used that same methodology. If the board didn't want to do it, there are other options. For example, there could be the first-come, first-served. We've been told, we went out there, that's not a good approach, because people will just complete an application to get it in the system and not give us the documentation that is necessary, and that's going to prolong the process very significantly. A third option is a lottery, which basically you apply and then by lottery you get it. We didn't think that would be a good approach, there's always going to be the challenges of, you know, was it a fair lottery system, et cetera? And so we did not see that as a, the best approach, but if the board thought it was the one we ought to do, we could do that. So I just wanted to share that with you, is that, that's how we plan to proceed on that prorated basis, depending on the total number of applications received. Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
How much they are eligible for, and whatever amount the board determines should be funded, we would divide that by the number of recipients that are qualified against those eligible funds.
Mr. Batte, a couple of things. First off, I do share your concern with the, two of the three options, I think the application period seems to be the most equitable and seems to make the most sense. You said a week or two weeks, so maybe split the difference and call it 10 days?
That would be fine, whatever the board decides.
And then I guess the question for the board would be with respect to that, if the money that we allocate, whether it's 7.5 or some other figure, isn't sufficient, do you want it to be dealt with just by going proportionately with what would be awarded? Or do you want Mr. Batte to come back and then we can readdress it as a commission, which to me seems interesting, so that we're not really shortchanging certain businesses if we still have funds available? Because I don't mind readdressing it to see if more than 7.5 is appropriate, but if you end up opening it and you can fully fund everything according to these criteria for 3 million or 6 million, you know, there's no harm. I'd just like to get you an initial authorization up to a certain amount, so that if you are able to fund everything, just go ahead and do it, and if not, then come back to us potentially and say, you know, to fully fund everything that qualifies, we need another X, whatever that number may be.
And we'd be happy to do that, if that's what the board would like to see, of course.
Commissioner Pritchett, you're going to, in all likelihood, make the motion, so what are your thoughts?
I like that. Just throw out, since you threw out an arbitrary number, what if we do 1,000 businesses and right now move 10 million into it?
I'm fine, that's fine.
So I think the next conversation we need to have as a group is how we're going to do the administration. If we do it with county staff, you're going to, this doesn't here, you'd have to hire people, or we got to get an outside contractor. So I have an idea to throw out, we talked about it last meeting, because I know the chambers are asking for some of the funds, too. So why don't we just let them go through the applications? They can do the administrative portion, and then they can turn over to the county staff, and we can make sure that it fits all of our criteria. And then that way, you know, instead of, sorry, chambers, instead of you guys just getting a grant, we're going to make it work for yours. So just a thought, that instead of hiring an outside contractor or having to hire more staff, why don't we just hire the chambers to do that portion?
If they're willing to do it.
So, discussion?
What do you all think? Commissioner Tabaya? Microphone turning on, there you go, that's the first place to start.
I'm, if the chamber agrees that none of their members would be eligible for these grants, then I would support that. But when the chamber that represents many of these groups, and I imagine has a fiduciary relationship with these groups, allowing them to pick and choose seems patently unfair to the businesses that didn't have the resources in the first place to join the chamber, or for a number of reasons decided not to participate with the chamber. The chamber is not opaque, sorry, the chamber is not transparent, it's opaque. I certainly would hope that they would open their books and that we could see how and for what reasons they made decisions. If it was done in-house, we wouldn't have that potential conflict. We don't have a list of their members, their employee salaries, and again, the conflicts of interest. There's also no reason to believe that the chamber has any level of competency to administer these kinds of programs. How many CPAs do they have? How many attorneys do they have? How many people with business degrees or advanced degrees do they have to administer any of these things? This could potentially lead to not only a waste of taxpayer funds, it could also lead to liability issues. Recall that we're on the hook if any of these decisions are made in an improper way. I don't know what would happen if claims of discrimination arise, is that something that the county would be responsible? Is that something that the county would be responsible for? Or is that something that the chamber would be? How will the chamber deal with traditional groups that don't meet the parameters and fall into this type of their business model? The internet-only businesses example. The chamber is, on top of that, a highly political organization. The chamber has a wing called Business Voice in which direct expenditures from chambers give to Business Voice. It's not even filtered. It's the Chamber of Titus Bill, for example, writes a check to Business Voice, and Business Voice, and I have a list of the more than $25,000 that they've spent on candidates. In essence, we are handing money over to an organization that turns around and hands money to us in a, probably not me after this, but us in a political environment. I think that there are more questions than solutions on this. I certainly, before we would do this, I think it would be interesting to find out the hourly rate that they would charge, as I have no problem with contracting out a third party if we can get it for $40 an hour. And if the chamber, from what I read, is almost double that, it seems like helping the chamber out sounds like a good idea, but it seems like it potentially could be a waste of dollars as well as bring up many issues, probably some that I haven't brought up altogether. Recall that the chamber was here at our last meeting where they directly were asking us for resources. I wish them well. I do not want to spend, again, our grandkids' money on helping an organization out that is just going to spend the dollars that we give them on political campaigns. I think it brings up too many issues, ones that I certainly don't want to get into from a liability perspective as well as from a perception perspective. So I can't support that in any way, shape, form, fashion, or function. I think it would be completely improper.
How do you really feel? Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, there are some things that I think I would have to be real careful with moving forward. It could not be just chamber businesses. I think if this were to work out, we'd have to get with Ms. Bentley and figure out how that criteria would work so that it was completely serving the community. And you know what, Commissioner Tobias, I agree, everybody gets political certain times, but I don't know about y'all's other chambers, but our chamber definitely is involved in helping our community. And I'm real thankful to Ms. Marcia and all that they do to help businesses survive and to get open. But there is that aspect, I agree, there could be that aspect. So I think I still like the idea. I don't know how all the things would work out. I have not had a talk with any of them, so I have no idea. I just thought it was a good idea. Actually, Linda Weatherman threw the idea out to me, too, and I thought that was pretty good because if we paid an outside entity anyway, and I think you guys are all okay, too. I think ours totally rocks. But as far as capability, I don't know how that would, we'd have to figure that out, too. But they're all pretty smart, too. But I do hear you, and you did make some good points. So legally, if we do this, we'd have to work this out. Ms. Bentley, was something that you would think through. But this would just be administrative, right, Mr. Abate? This, they're not going to be handing the money out. They're just kind of doing some of that legwork like we would have processing applications.
Right, my understanding is right. They would just be involved in reviewing applications and accompanying documentation to determine did they meet the eligibility and do we have sufficient documentation? Then it would be coming back to the county, and we would process it through county finance.
Okay.
All right, I'll jump in again on that. And Commissioner Tobias, just full disclosure, I've never really been a fan of Business Voice. I think they endorsed my opponent in the primary and then endorsed my opponent in the general. No love lost there. What I will say is if their involvement is restricted to processing applications rather than making determinations on those, to simply say, as was just suggested, that they either meet the criteria in their opinion or they don't for some reason, that concerns me a lot less. The other thing, if it helps internally on the county umbrella side, I've got two full-time employees. I think I have fewer full-time employees than any of the other commissioners, but I will do whatever I have to. If freeing up one of those two employees for half of her workday for 20 hours a week would help somehow in processing whatever we need to process on our end. She's rather smart, has at least a couple masters degrees, so I'm happy to even sacrifice for my own office if we can do something to address questions of propriety and make sure that everything's on the up and up and that it appears as such as well.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Smith, and then Commissioner Tobias.
Thank you, sir. I'm just taking some notes here, and I'm listening to the conversation, and I think there's an awful lot of wise counsel being offered by my fellow commissioners. One of the things that came to mind, we've been, we've been literally given this money by the federal government, and I think Commissioner Pritchett hit it right on the head. The idea is not to make any of these companies whole, but to get money out into the community and to the businesses as quickly as possible. So the money is out there, and it stimulates the economy. So I kind of, I would like to equate it with a ship that is taking on water and being in dangerous sinking. It's critical to start the pumps as soon as possible to keep that ship afloat. And so it's really critical that we get the money out there. If we keep saying, well, we're going to do this for this amount, because we're already flirting with the fourth quarter in another six weeks, and the damage was done at the beginning of the second quarter. So I would encourage my fellow commissioners, if we're going to do this, we need to get started. As far as the chambers are concerned, if they're in an administrative role, I think they're ideally suited because that's what they do. They do business, they know businesses. And it would enable them to become a little bit more solvent because it would be helping them pay their employees, and they may even employ more employees, which would bring more money into the community. Because the more employees that make money, and they're actually doing something for it and earning the money, that money goes to the good of a lot of people. And they would be certainly lessening the amount of work that needs to be done from the standpoint of who to give this money to. So those are my thoughts.
All right, Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I seem to recall a number of, in the neighborhood of $60 to $75 an hour is what they were looking for. I think that whether it's there or not, it's a little absurd. I looked up the average hourly rate in Florida, and it looks like it's just over $18, while I understand that there are other costs, healthcare costs, various taxes that go along that way. I would ask that we cap that at no more than what a first-year teacher would make. I, if we're going to help out the chamber, I don't think we should be gifting them $75 an hour or whatever it would cost. It sounds like the, there's not sentiment. What we normally, I imagine, do is RFP this. But in lieu of an RFP, I think we set a reasonable hourly rate.
What do you think's reasonable?
I, again, a Google search, the hourly, the annual salary in Florida, $36,000. You're looking at teacher pay, you know, upper, you know, upper 40s. I think they're, you know, under the governor DeSantis, it's 40, whatever it was, $47,500 bucks. So, you know, dividing that by a 2,000-hour annual, I think anywhere in that range is somewhat reasonable. I don't think the $75 an hour that's been floated out there is even close to reasonable. Again, we do not know the qualifications of any of these people, whether or not we're dealing with attorneys. As you've pointed out, if they don't have a JD, we will take their opinion accordingly. If they don't have an MD, we will, or a DO. By the way, my sister-in-law, who's a farm D, wanted to know if she was included in that, but...
I invoke my Fifth Amendment right.
Okay. Either way, I think we set a reasonable rate. And I'm open, you know, open to suggestions. This was just a fallback, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I think it's an interesting idea. If they have someone that, quite frankly, is a high school student working off-hours, I think, you know, $60, $70 an hour may be a bit obscene. But I just, I'm struggling to figure out really what amount is appropriate. I don't know that I have the expertise to say a particular amount is. Does Mr. Abate, do you have an idea in terms of what might be good?
Let me say that what the committee did and the amount that we gave you was, was an outside number of $400,000 for the total administration of the program. At that point, we were assuming it would be close to the full amount that was available. And we didn't know how many applications, but we were assuming, I think the committee assumed somewhere in the area of 4,800 out of 13,000 small businesses that were under 50 or more. Now, this is going to include, at this point, it's going to include nonprofits. I can't give you a number for how many potential nonprofits might be applying. But what we would do is, if you gave us a not-to-exceed number that is something less than the $400,000 or the $400,001 per hour, that would be somewhere between 25. And I believe staff, when they were looking at it for the professional, thought that the cost could be of professional services of that nature when you were going to a third-party consultant. We thought it would be in the area of $50 to $75 per hour that the consultant firm would be charging. That's why they, I think, the, that task force looked at that potential amount. That's how they came up with it. But we could definitely live within the parameters and then come in with a, you know, a contract for, you know, that we would put into place with the chamber that would accomplish all the administration that we're talking about within the parameters. And then they would have the choice, of course, to participate in it for the two amounts, not to exceed whatever the total amount the board put in for administration, and then not to exceed an hourly rate. And we would ask them to, of course, identify the hours that they spend on the administration of this program. That way, we would, you would have the accountability that I think the board is looking for.
Commissioner Snoddy?
I think my question was going to be, you came up with this hourly rate. Are you assuming that's only one individual working on this? Or are you assuming that somebody's...
Well, I'm assuming there'd be more than one in each of the chambers that would be working on it. I would anticipate.
Right, because I don't, I don't want an unqualified person managing a federally...
And then, of course, that would be up to the chambers at that point to determine who it is.
No, but what I'm saying is, is that if you go for the minimum wage or something close to it, you know, or you're looking to save money, that may not be an area where you want to save, considering the, you know, the intensity of this program. We want to make sure we're following those guidelines. And I don't want you, the task force, to get a bunch of applications that are either ineligible, incomplete, or, you know, they don't meet the criteria. So that's, that would be my concern, too.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, there's a chance the chamber might not even want to do it. I don't know. I just, I just saw them in the list of the four things. Linda told me she would do it if you put a gun to her head. So I'm thinking she doesn't want to do it. So I don't know, you know, as far as what cost or whatever, but I don't even know if the chamber would consider it. I know they were just kind of thrown in there. But there's a possibility that it's something they wouldn't want to take on anyway. So I guess maybe, should we allow you to come back with some, even talk to them, see if they would want to, or see what the options are or the cost, so...
Can I object for just a moment on that front? I have an idea.
Anytime, sir.
I appreciate it. So if you want to phrase your motion to essentially say staff shall endeavor to involve the chamber in it if cost feasible, I think that resolves the issue. And I don't know, and I'm throwing numbers out here that, quite frankly, I would rather you verify and determine are appropriate because they may be too high, too low, or right on the money. You may want to have a differentiator based on whether or not they have a postgraduate degree, whether it's a master's or a doctorate. Because if you have a high school kid doing something on the side versus someone that's got six degrees and, you know, 15 doctorates on top, I just don't know that you want to have one particular number that fits all. If there's a need to have one particular individual that's got some professional degree or terminal degree, you know, it shouldn't be that they're getting 12 bucks an hour. But I would rather leave those determinations to staff because I trust you to either know or be able to do due diligence to figure out what's appropriate, if you're comfortable with that.
We'll be happy to do that. I think we can accomplish that. The only thing we'd ask is that, give us what the cap is as to the administrative dollars, and then we will work with the chambers to do something that'll work in light of how this program is approved by the board.
Please.
Sir, well, if you had to tell me how much it would cost to hire staff, that would be a number that would help. Or how much an outside contractor you believe would, would cost? So other than that, I have no idea in that, even determining the dollars.
The number that we gave you, the outside number, was $400,000.
$400,000.
That would be for the all-in, inclusive of everything that would be involved in this small business economic relief program.
So I think you're going to have to go and negotiate that with knowing that if you have to do the outside contractor with the $400,000, we have to allow you to do that, or we're going to clog up. But I know you're hearing us as far as determining those dollar amounts. Is that good, Commissioner?
Commissioner Snoddy?
Yeah, and obviously, I want to make sure that we're being, you know, fiscally responsible with this money, but we can talk about every little detail of this program. I mean, as long as we're making good decisions, fiscally smart decisions, let's get this program going. I don't want you to have to keep bringing things back. I don't want people to have to wait anymore. I mean, the idea is to get this money out there. Again, I want to be responsible, let's be clear. But at the same time, I mean, we're going to go in circles. I mean, we don't even know if the chamber wants to do it. I don't want to put them on the spot by calling them up. But obviously, nod to me and let me know if you want to come up, and I'd be more than happy to give you the mic and have you at least tell us what your thoughts are. They may not even want to run it. I don't know, I've not had those conversations. I know it was talked about. But if we have to, we could hire a temporary employee at the county to take care of it. We'd be giving somebody else a job. We would pay them fairly.
And I believe that, that's what I hear the board telling me, is try to work it out with the chambers. If we can't get an agreement with them, implement the program using, I think that was option number four, would be using our economic development staff, providing the oversight, and we would do it internally.
I just, I just want to get started. I don't want to delay it anymore.
And I think we hear you loud and clear on this.
And as I mentioned before, I'm happy to free up one of my two FTEs for half the time. I can't give her, give her up 40 hours a week. But if having Regina onboard, too, would help you guys out, I'll make it work somehow in the office. So to save the county a little bit. All right, if someone wants to make a motion, wink, wink, nudge, nudge, Commissioner Pritchett, I think that the few things that we discussed, also for the clerk's benefit, to make sure we're all on the same page.
Okay, I'm going to start it and jump in with some stuff if I leave things out.
Yes, ma'am.
That we would do a one-time grant not to exceed 10,000 for small businesses that have up to 50 or less full-time equivalent employees. This would include not-for-profits. And the eligibility criteria that's in our packet would be in there as far as having to meet all the Corona criteria, and that we would have the manager go for it with trying to figure out administration as far as the options that we gave them not to exceed 400,000 if you had to with an outside contractor.
All right, and then the E-Verify if possible?
E-Verify, yes, yes.
And then, must be in operation since we said January 1st, 2020, so we'll amend that February 2020?
Yes, thank you, sir.
And I think you may have mentioned the 10 million total.
Yes, so do 1,000 businesses, 10 million total.
And you also talked about a 10-day application period.
10-day app period.
10-day app period.
And then we said a clawback if the business is receiving other reimbursement from a government agency or another government agency?
It's either that, or we would also include in the clawback if Treasury came back and determined that they were not eligible when they review it, that there would be a clawback provision that would be covering any audit that came from the Treasury.
And then also, county staff shall endeavor to involve the chambers if cost feasible?
Yes, that's the best motion I've done so far.
You guys getting along?
It's a good one. All right, give us a thumbs up or thumbs down? All right, we're good?
All right.
Anything else that we're forgetting? Commissioner Tobias, you got a light, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There were a couple of things that would make you ineligible that I had concerns with. I understand why the chamber put it in there, but they wanted to exclude internet businesses. Internet businesses employ people, and I understand that internet businesses probably aren't members of the chambers, they don't pay dues. But I think excluding them is patently unfair, though expected. Second of all, and I hate to, hate to say this, but I understand why it was put there, exclusion for businesses with legal actions against the county. I think it should be your right to sue the county. I don't certainly support that action. But I think precluding you from, I don't know, I don't know if there are any legal issues with that, but I think that that's unfair. I don't know if there are any legal issues with that, but I think that that's unfair. Again, I'm not an attorney, have spent no time, but what's your, as a, as a licensed attorney, what's your thought on making that an exclusion? And that's listed, that was listed in the packet. My suggestion is to pull it.
I'm going to do something I don't normally do and bite my lip and look at Eden because I've got some very profound thoughts, but I don't think that it would be wise to share them. Ms. Bentley?
This was provided partly by the task force, and they spent a lot of time looking at all these issues. Things like code enforcement liens, that type of thing, you, like the e-verify, yes, you can include that kind of criteria. So you could keep it in, but if you don't want to, that's not required.
Yeah, and I, and I had, sorry, I had no problem with the fines, but legal action, you know, if Morgan &amp; Morgan decided to sue the county for a sidewalk for the twenty-seventh time this month, I, I certainly would not want them to be precluded from receiving these dollars because they have legal action pending. So it wasn't the fine aspect of things, things that have been adjudicated, it was the legal action.
So, so we'd be okay with leaving the code enforcement liens in then? Is that what you're saying?
I, I don't know that we have a consensus from the commission, because quite frankly, my, my opinion, without getting into the logic unless someone wants me to, is I would prefer that we exclude them if they've sued us, whether or not it was meritorious, especially if it wasn't meritorious, though.
I'm, I'm not voting for this either way. I just wondered, I, I just was curious as to, I was more stuck on the internet only. I thought that that would be patently unfair.
So I, I'm just trying to recall the exact verbiage that you're concerned with. It, it didn't say, if I remember correctly, internet business, it was internet only, so that means they don't have any, any physical storefront or anything of that sort. Is that your recollection as well?
Internet businesses still, still have a place where they, a nexus where they, where they store goods, where they transport goods. They may not have a storefront, but they certainly employ hundreds, thousands, tens of thousands of people nationwide. Amazon would be a, probably a pretty good example of, of business that is-
He's got a point.
It, it is an interesting point. I'll, I'll go with, with whatever the commission decides as a majority. I'm not going to block it either way on account of that.
I, I'm good with internet businesses because they still have to fit the, and that's a good idea, because they still have to fit the other criteria of having to show that there's utility payments and that they have staff payment, and they would have lost money of twenty-five percent or more, so. Yeah.
All right, Commissioner Nardi, do you want me to, to clear your light, or do you have something?
Well, yeah, because actually, my question was answered because that was the code enforcement issue. I have an issue if, if someone owes, owes tens of thousands of dollars to the county that they're getting a grant from the county.
Yeah, I, I also don't want to-
As long as that's out of it, I'm okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm also worried about folks that, especially folks that have sued us frivolously multiple times, and there are some that, that are out there. I don't want to finance their lawsuit against the county. So that's the simplest, nicest way I can put it.
Okay, so we can modify the motion to not exclude internet businesses if they still are able to meet the criteria.
Perfect, and I'll, I'll second that. Commissioner Tabia, I know that you've had a light on before. Is that an old one, or?
I'm done, thank you.
You sure now?
I'm, I'm not voting for it, but thanks for your vote.
He has an awful lot of input for somebody who's not going to support it anyway.
You know, truth be told, if you have a suggestion, it's a good suggestion. Even if you're not going to support it, I'm happy to incorporate what we can.
So basically, we're going to strike from ineligible under that section, nonprofit entities and businesses that are operating solely as an internet business. We're going to strike that from being ineligible. So it will be eligible, both nonprofits and internet businesses.
Yes, sir. So that's, that's Commissioner Pritchett's motion. I second that. Any further discussion? All right, I'll go ahead and call the question. All in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
I was going to predict that one. All right, passes four-one with Commissioner Tabia and the negative.
At this point, I believe the, the final area we were going to cover has already been covered by the board since we've included nonprofits in the program. So unless the board wanted this as a separate program, I think we will just move on without doing that.
No, I, I think we're good unless someone else wants to hear about it. All right, looks good. Bear with me a moment. Okay, let's see where we are. We can move on from I-one to J-one. The John Tabia Mud Pond item, that's what I call it. It's not really the John Tabia Mud Pond. I, I've spoken with staff, I'm comfortable with this. If someone has concerns, I'm happy to have staff do an intro. We may want to do a minimal intro just to make sure everything's on the record. I don't see any public comment cards on this. Ms., Ms. Bentley, do you feel that we need an intro?
Just the number and the, the name of the item.
All right, item J is in Juliet one. Approval regarding contract for sale and purchase and amendment one to contract for sale and purchase from property owner Stephen Day Paget, two Ts, for the basin one zero zero six drainage improvement project, district two.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second Commissioner Nardi's motion to approve item J is in Juliet one. All in favor of approving J is in Juliet one, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, J-two.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and this is just legislative intent to advertise. It's dealing with the permission to consume alcohol. Question comes up a lot, and it's kind of interesting, is alcohol allowed on county beaches? And the answer is maybe, and the reason why it's maybe is it's how you get that alcohol to the beach, because if you park in a county park, you cannot have alcohol in that county park. It's okay once you get it to the beach, just not while you're in the park. So in other words, you can parachute with alcohol to the beach and you'd be fine, but you cannot get out of your car with said alcohol. Now, there are ways to do that. The way would be to go get a permit to have alcohol, and it's a permit for space on, on, on a county park, but people aren't going to go through that permitting process, and it's not going to take away from the permit, that's just a box that you check. So there should be no loss of resources because of it. So this just, we'll seek to clear up, and I'll go over the specifics of it later, if needed, that interesting conundrum of how do you get your alcohol legally to the beach? This would solve it, and for, to, an added precaution here right now on county beaches, glass is allowed, which is probably not the best of ideas. So this would, while it would allow alcohol on the beach, it would say it could not be consumed, consumed in a glass container. And I would be, I, I do want to add in, we have some wonderful breweries in Brevard County. We have Intracoastal, D-four, Bug Nutty, D-two, Charlie and Jake's, D-four, Hells and Blazes, D-three, Dirty Oar, D-two, Play Linda, D-one, Florida Beer Company, D-two, Cocoa Beach Brewing Company, D-two, Beach Fly, D-four. So we have some great small businesses here that I frequent on quite a few occasions.
All of them?
Not on the same day, maybe the same weekend, but this would clear up that conundrum there. So just asking for my, permission to advertise.
All right, Commissioner Tabia, I got to ask you, because I, I think it's a good idea overall, but I really want to use you as a guinea pig. If we advertised it as applying for the entire county, Ms. Bentley, I don't think there'd be anything prohibiting us from then turning around and saying, okay, we're only going to do it in this district or these particular districts. Would there be anything that you're aware of? I wouldn't think so.
No, you could, you could walk it back. That's what you're asking.
Yeah, I don't, I don't mind advertising it, but I'll just tell you when it comes back to us. I'd like to at least keep D-two out. If the other districts want to do it, God bless each and every one of you. I would like to kind of see how it works for a few months, six months to a year maybe max, and if, if everything's hunky-dory and I'm not hearing from law enforcement or county staff that there are problems, I'm happy to put it in place in D-two as well.
In fact, we could, in the period of the next two weeks, we could add, we could add that in there. There are a number of parks in D-three, so I think the bulk of them would be in my district, but certainly that, that would, I, I would be in favor of that.
All right, I'll, I'll support it as is because it's just the ad. Ms. Bentley?
I just want to, a point of clarification. When you asked about countywide, you know, your county ordinances can apply in all the municipalities, and when I answered your question, I was addressing that. You do not want it to apply in the municipalities, you only want it in the county districts? Is that correct?
That's my understanding, Commissioner Tabia.
And you want to exclude District Two?
At this point, but again, with the advertisement, you can write it all-inclusive, and we can just walk it back when it comes back if that's easier for you. I, I don't care either way.
I, it, that doesn't matter, I just need to know your intent.
I prefer to leave D-two out if everyone's okay with that for the time being. And frankly, in six months to a year after this is put in place, I'll probably have an agenda item come up doing exactly this to make it uniform.
Interestingly enough, Mr. Chair, it's, the municipalities are almost the exact opposite. In other words, it's okay in the parks, it's just not okay on the beach. So, you know, they're, you know, I, I have no problem if the cities decide to go in a different direction. I was looking more for the, the county park, or the county parks, county facilities, but again, if D, if you don't think that works for D-two, then by all means, I would support the exclusion of, of D-two.
I appreciate it, just not yet. Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, I, I like that they're able to take their drinks over to the beach, and I also like that you put in something about the glass, because that always concerns me, too. Do we allow alcohol on all the parks right now, then? By permit?
No, not without, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir, please.
Not, not without a permit. You have to get a permit, and it's a permit for gathering.
Okay.
And then there's a box that you check on the side that alcohol will be consumed, so.
Is there a reason why we wouldn't allow them with alcohol, from anything you've researched?
I tend to be pro-alcohol, so, you know, it's-
I'm just wondering, like at kids' baseball games or something? Maybe kids' baseball games, maybe if they have it in a little sleeve or something? I don't know.
Oh, I don't want kid baseball players drinking alcohol.
I know, but this would be in the children's park then, too, so I don't know.
I, I get it. This is mainly for the beach, beach crossovers.
Yeah, so maybe if we do it at parks that are, that are close proximity of beaches?
We could probably talk about it when we bring it back.
Why, why don't we just let the advertisement go?
I like the idea.
Anything would be an improvement, so if we have to roll it back that way, I certainly would be supportive. I'm not in a bargaining position right now.
So Commissioner Tabia, your motion is to approve it for all districts except D-two for purposes of advertisement, and then we'll address what we need to-
And the exclusion of the cities as well.
Yes, and excluding the cities. So for unincorporated Brevard, less D-two at this point, for purposes of advertisement. Fair?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Chair.
All right, I'll go ahead and second that. Oh, Commissioner Nardi?
I would just caution, I mean, you're including D-two now. I thought you said that you may claw that back after. The only reason being is that you may hear from your constituents and hear that this is something that they desire, or you may have some thoughts on. I'm just, I'm just saying, I would hate for you to exclude it if it's something later.
I, I really, I, I'm pretty confident that there's-
Unless you're pretty sure, okay.
There's very little that's going to change my mind in the immediate future. I really just kind of want to make sure that this goes as well as I think and hope that it goes. And assuming that's the case, we'll have to re-advertise it anyway because enough time will have lapsed.
All right, I just wanted to be sure.
No, I appreciate it, Commissioner. All right, so we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, alcohol wins the day, passes unanimously. J-three, permission to submit the application and accept the 2020 countywide Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. Ms. Bentley, are we okay without any additional intro unless it's requested?
That's fine.
Motion, please?
So moved.
All right, a motion from Commissioner Nardi to approve. I'll go ahead and second that. Any discussion regarding item J is in Juliet three? Seeing none, all in favor of approving J is in Juliet three, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? J-three passes unanimously. J-four, permission to submit the application and accept the 2020 coronavirus emergency supplement funding program grant. Any discussion with respect to that? Motion? All right, a motion from Commissioner Pritchett.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Nardi. Any further? Seeing none, all in favor of approving J is in Juliet four, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. J-five, I believe was deleted, was it not, Mr. Batte?
Yeah, it was deleted.
Yes, sir. All right, so let's take a look here. We do have a couple of public comments under K is in Kilo. We have two of them. In order, we have Sophia Mazo or Mazo, I apologize if I'm mispronouncing, from Melbourne, and then Michael Bramson, familiar name from Altamont Springs. Let's have the two of them come up at this point, if we may. And since we've already got your name and city of residence, you can use the full time to say your piece. Welcome.
Hi, I really don't have anything to say, besides the fact that this entire meeting was always between time. I thought it was going to be at five, and so did everyone I'm here to speak on behalf of, and last minute, it was pushed up until two. What we were here to talk about was not talked about, and you're not listening to us. We came up here and asked you to help us, not businesses, and that's all you've been talking about. I'm tired. We're all tired. Do better. I don't want to keep coming here and saying the same thing. That's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Bramson?
I won't need the whole time, but Mike Bramson, president of Brevard County Firefighters Union. We had a consent item that went through with no conversation, so I wanted to thank you very much for that. Also wanted to continue to show a little bit of support for the community of Brevard County, the citizens and visitors of what they've done for first responders, the firefighters, the frontline workers, the sheriff's office, the police departments within its boundaries. We'll come here to give a little bit of insight about what's going on. Not that I want to take words away from the person who spoke before me, but there's a level of exhaustion in the entire nation, and you should be cautious about where we go forward with your first responders. They're, they're used, and people need them, and they're required, and we have a lot of things on the docket coming up in the next couple of months, and a lot of changes in Brevard County that I expect will happen, and it's an election year, and we know how that goes. So as we make considerations and we move forward, all the unions asking is if there's an opportunity for conversation, that if you need some sort of point of interest, we're asking that there would be an opportunity for you to reach out to the union, to speak with us, to make sure that we're not forgetting the people who are actually doing the jobs in the field, who are exposed to these events. We still have everything else going on. It was a very, very intense Fourth of July weekend. Most of the time, Fourth of July is our busiest holiday for firefighters, and then Mother Nature gave us a bunch of lightning strikes as well. So I just wanted to bring that up, and then thank you for the support on everything else we're moving forward. It was a very interesting contract to put together, to have it approved, and I thank you for the legitimacy and the opportunity to speak on the behalf of the firefighters to make sure we got that put together. And I just wanted to thank you, and the citizens of Brevard County, and everybody who comes and visits our beaches, and our return to space, and all the things you guys talk about every single time you come up here.
I appreciate that. And I'll just, since you've come up here with respect to that item, I just want to throw out there publicly, I know I've had conversations with Frank to a greater extent than Jill, but I really want to see something substantial done in not this budget you're working on now, but the subsequent budget with respect to BCFR. I'm not suggesting that we need to exceed the charter cap, but if that comes to pass, if that's the proposal, in order to get them where they need to be and where's appropriate, I would potentially support exceeding it with respect to BCFR. Same is true with respect to a fire assessment. I would expect to see something, and I would like to see something in the coming budget with respect to that. Frankly, I would have pushed for it for this, this immediate budget that we're dealing with now. But I think coronavirus has put everyone in a position where it's so uncertain, and it's, it's rough at this point with respect to revenues and what we're taking in, that now is not necessarily the time. And I feel bad to say that, because frankly, I was hoping we'd be able to push for it sooner rather than later, but I think delaying it a year is really all I can stomach, and they are in a better spot than they were last year. But I can tell you from my perspective, public safety, and that's not just law enforcement, firefighters, EMTs, fire medics, SWAT medics, the whole bit, they're tremendously important to me. And when someone's house is on fire, or there is an electrical issue, and someone gets electrocuted, and they need to respond, or that someone has an MI or a stroke, I don't want subpar service. We really, we have a core obligation to our citizens to have appropriate public safety, including fire response and including EMTs. And I think we need to do more as a county to make sure that we're prioritizing those folks that are putting themselves on the line for frankly, what's a pittance compared to what they ought to be getting. And I'm not saying we need to be number one in the vicinity, but we need to be more competitive than we are. I don't think we're there by any means, and I think we owe our firefighters, and by extension, our constituents, a little more. So I'm confident that we'll have a proposal come up, whether or not it exceeds the charter cap, that substantially improves their standing for the coming year.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, appreciate it. That's it for public comment? I don't believe we have any others? Nope. Okay, so let's see. Do we want to go to board reports? H, we still can't address, because we're nowhere near five yet. We can address board reports, and then we can see where we're at, and then potentially just take a little recess and reconvene at that point. Mr. Abate, will that work?
Yes, I do. I have a board report that I hope everyone had the opportunity to read a letter that I received yesterday from Yuri Rodriguez, Solid Waste Director, that we received from Waste Management relating to collection services. The, you know, there's some issues that are ongoing related to COVID and service delivery, and so a request was made relating to recycling services. We invited Waste Management to be here today so that they could share where they are with the board relative to the service, and the requests that they're making to, from their perspective, what they shared is they're trying to be proactive in assuring that they can provide the optimal level of service in light of the conditions that they're facing. So I believe they're here to present to the board, if the board's willing to hear them.
Unless someone objects, I'm happy to hear from. And is it all right with you all if I give her, let's say, six minutes? Is that all right? Okay. Welcome, Ms. Ryder Hicks.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, everyone. Deana Ryder Hicks, Public Affairs Manager with Waste Management. Thank you all very much for the opportunity to speak with you here this afternoon. Just to give you some, some background, as Mr. Abate was saying, as we all know, we've seen a recent spike here in cases of COVID-19. It's significantly impacting our workforce here in Florida. We currently have 69 drivers out in Florida due to COVID, either sick or in quarantine, and Brevard County is no exception. Now, in January and February of this year, our local Brevard facilities here in Melbourne and Cocoa, we were in the process of hiring new drivers to fill several vacancies that we have here, when of course, in mid-March, COVID-19 struck. It has impacted and delayed the hiring process for new drivers significantly. Now, in recent weeks, we've been diligently trying to hire additional drivers for the open positions, but there's a shortage of candidates here for the Brevard positions due in part to COVID-19. Good news is, we've extended offers to two candidates. We also have two additional drivers who have just started our OJT training program. However, our training program takes 90 days until we can put a driver on the route alone. We do this to ensure that the drivers are qualified, that they're ready, and they're able to be safe on the route. So these drivers, it's likely until September, until they're able to be up and running, fully functioning on the routes. We have brought in additional drivers from other facilities across the country to assist. Now, these are very highly experienced drivers, but these routes are running much more slowly, because obviously, these drivers are not as familiar with the routes as the daily drivers would be. Now, in the past few days, we've been able to institute additional measures that will help routes to complete on the assigned route day, including an earlier opening time for the Brevard County landfills. We'd really like to thank Mr. Rodriguez for that. We think that will have a significant impact, and that will certainly help. We also have the drivers now working the maximum 14-hour DOT daily limit. We believe that measure will help as well. Now, with regard to our letter, we're not looking to institute recycling suspension today or tomorrow, but we're, as Mr. Abate said, we're looking to be prepared for a worst-case scenario. In the next several weeks, there is certainly the possibility that we could see more COVID infections. We could see an additional spike due to activity here locally with relation to the July 4th holiday. We're hopeful that these new measures, including the landfill opening times and the 14-hour workdays, are going to help. But the purpose of the letter is a proactive ask in the event that this pandemic impacts our Brevard workforce significantly in the coming weeks. Specifically, what we're asking for is for your approval in advance before we find ourselves in a significant emergency situation, only as a measure of last resort, if we find ourselves in the position of an unexpected absence with, with this occurring with three or more of our Brevard County drivers. And this could be due to COVID quarantine, illness, or any other factors that could lead a driver to be out of the, out of the, out of the, the work, our workforce. Now, if this situation occurs, we will absolutely work with staff. We'll notify the public, and with the county's permission, we will proceed with the service change for approximately 30 days while we address the absence of three drivers of our workforce. As you know, our first priority has to be to collect the garbage and yard waste for the health and, health and safety of the county. This measure will help us do that in the event of a severe workforce impact. We remain committed to recycling and reducing contamination as a company. This is something that comes from the top down. We do not take this ask lightly. Again, this is a measure of last resort. In the event something significant happens that impacts our workforce, and this is to ensure the health and safety priority of garbage and yard waste collection, if we experience a significant impact. So thank you all very much. My colleagues and I are here joining me. We are certainly happy to answer any additional questions that you may have.
Yes, I had some backup in the back row there.
I, I do. I have a lot. Yes, thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Isnardi?
I have some questions for both Frank and Deana.
Please.
Frank, I know you introduced the item, sort of, but could you just tell the folks listening, because this wasn't on the agenda, could you tell them the bottom line, what they're asking?
Yes, what they're asking for is, as a result of their shortage of drivers, they have a number of routes that they're not able to complete on the day that they, that they are currently assigned to complete them. So because of that, what they're, what they're asking to do in their letter is ask the board to permit them to not collect recycling materials and go through their normal recycling process, but rather use those facilities and those bins and bring it to the local solid waste disposal areas and dispose of it at our landfill for the, for an interim period.
So the recycled materials will go to our landfill, correct?
Right.
Okay. And my next question is for Deana. I mean, is this happening to other companies? Is this happening in other areas that you service?
Yes, Commissioner, this is. This is an industry-wide impact. It's not germane just to Waste Management. This is something that we are seeing industry-wide. And as a company, yes, we are seeing this nationwide. These are conversations that we are having across the board, throughout the state, and there'll probably be more conversations coming, and this is something, these conversations have already happened in other areas of the country.
Okay, so I don't have any more questions. My issue with this, obviously, is I don't, I don't want recycled materials at our landfill. I mean, I think we've been battling this whole trash thing, you know, from the get-go this commission has, and we're talking about possibly putting another landfill on 192. And, you know, and I, and I feel for Waste Management. I think you guys do a great job. But what I take issue with are two things, not just the environmental impacts, but the impacts to residents. So now we're picking up their trash, potentially picking up their trash for 30 days, and telling them that they've spent the time and cared enough about their household waste to recycle. But we're picking up both because of driver shortages, which is no fault of the counties. But we're picking up the recycling materials and not, and putting them at our landfill. So what is this telling residents? It's telling residents that their recycling efforts don't matter. So I worry that people will be less apt to recycle, and that's just sort of a secondary effect. But, you know, and I know it stinks to be a large corporation and be hit by COVID, but everyone's been hit by COVID, whether you be the employee that gets their hours cut, or loses their job, or, or has to work extra because they're in a different job. I mean, you have a contract with us, you know, the expectation is that the contract's fulfilled as, as, as written, and these are some of those things that you have to take into consideration. This is one of those losses, I mean, unfortunately. So I won't support this, but probably primarily more toward the environmental issue. But it's no reflection on what a great company you have. I just, I will never support putting recycled materials into our landfill. I mean, that would be foolish and reckless on our part, so.
And Commissioner, you are, you are absolutely right, and, and we agree. And, and if I may.
Ms. Ryder Hicks, I apologize, and I would love to let, let you have the back and forth, but I just want to make sure we get through, and I'll give you an opportunity.
Certainly, I just wanted to offer a point of clarification, Commissioner, absolutely.
I promise I'll let you.
Thank you.
If you're all right with that, then that's fine, please.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. One option would be landfilling the recycles. The other option that was really outlined in our letter is actually to suspend recycling for a very short period of time. That would mean just that recycling is not collected. Residents could choose to.
So they just have to hold on to the recycling?
Hold on to their recyclables, or whatever they choose to do so.
But our contract clearly has you picking up our recycling, so that's another issue, but.
Commissioner Tobias?
I, this, I guess, would be for Ms. Bentley. Are there remedies currently in the contract should Waste Management not be able to meet their obligations?
Yes. I'm sorry you couldn't hear me. Yes.
Okay, so we'll get to, I'll cut off this other stuff, because Commissioner Isnardi said it a lot kinder than what I would. But this is a, this is an attempt by a large company to circumvent a contract, a competitively bid contract, and come directly to the board. I'm trying to say this nice, so I'll just go with, if, if, if the hat was on the other hand, we, the hat was on the other head, we, we know how this would work, how we just saw it. Waste Management was in a contract, and they had the ability to get out of that contract, and they did. And now our residents are faced with a 40% increase, or will be faced with a 40% increase in their rates. Again, it was competitively bid, but Waste Management had the ability to continue with said contract. They made a business decision. I have nothing against it, but they made a business decision to go out and competitively bid, and they did. They ended up successful. But now, after that huge windfall, they're asking some kindness on our part. And I don't think that cutting services at this time, while we increase the cost to our residents, is a fair thing even to ask. I, I think it's disgusting that you come and, and ask us for this on what is a multimillion-dollar contract. I think that in the future, that you abide by the contract that we have in place and deal with our very competent legal staff here, instead of coming to the board thinking that we are not going to support the contract that was competitively bid. So I appreciate your time. Good try, but I just don't think it's, I don't feel comfortable speaking with my constituents and telling them, yes, services are going down quite a bit, and costs are going up quite a bit. And it's because of three drivers could not come to work. I suggest that you apply for part of the $130 billion of PPP money out there, and, or increase the wages that you pay your drivers. That may ameliorate the situation. But putting that on the backs of our constituents, I think, is the wrong way to go. So I will not be supporting this.
Yeah, Ms. Ryder Hicks, I'll, I'll jump in. I'm, I'm going to try to be a little more diplomatic, because I feel for you here. That said, knowing that there is a likelihood or a potential that you're going to have an issue, I think the time to address it, again, respectfully from your position, would be now. I'm not going to support simply relieving one party of its obligations, especially given the nature of the negotiations that took place. Not to say anything was improper by any means, but I think in order to even consider allowing some leeway with respect to it, there would have to be some substantial cost adjustment tied to it, where the county would, would be relieved of some of its financial burden, so that I have something to tell my constituents, "Look, you know, this was an extenuating circumstance, and Waste Management went ahead and they, they forgave X amount of our obligation to them as a result of it. It really was in need." That would also serve to illustrate it really is something that's difficult or impossible to prevent. But not seeing any, any proposal as to any cost adjustment, I can't support it. I mean, the most I would, I would consider today, and I'm, I'm not really thrilled with it even at this point, would be to authorize the county manager to negotiate to determine what conditions are appropriate for approving some sort of a temporary waiver or relief from contractual obligations. But I would really expect there to be some meaningful cost adjustment to reflect that period of time where we're not getting the service that we bargained for. Everyone certainly, you know, the county government and Waste Management had the benefit of ample time to negotiate this. You know, they had the ability to run it through anyone they wanted, as far as professionals, anyone that didn't have a conflict, I should say, to determine what risks they were assuming by entering into that contract. And I, I'm not saying that, that anyone necessarily foresaw a global pandemic, which is extenuating to a degree, but it, it doesn't rise to the level in my mind of making it impossible to perform on the contract. I, I think knowing that it's something that may come up, you know, now is the time to take whatever steps need be to ensure that that service interruption doesn't take place. And I feel for you. I'm not going to criticize you for coming and asking. You know, I think it's your right to come and ask for whatever it is that you think may be appropriate, or even arguably appropriate. But, you know, again, the most I would do tonight, I wouldn't be thrilled doing it, is to authorize the county manager to negotiate with Waste Management to determine what conditions are necessary, and what sort, what sort of a cost adjustment would be appropriate, given the degradation in service for whatever period of time we're talking. That's, that's about as far as I'm willing to go, but I don't know that I even have another two votes with, with respect to doing that much, so we'll, we'll see. Commissioner Smith, I know you're on the line. I want to make sure you give you an opportunity.
Yeah, I'm listening to everything that is being said. My perspective is perhaps a little bit different, having been in business for 40 years and having a lot of different cycles to go through, recessions, et cetera. You know, I really appreciate the job that Waste Management has done in the county. I think they have good quality people, and I understand them coming to us. But the bottom line is that when you choose to be in business, you choose the good with the bad. It's all part and parcel, and you do what you have to do to get things done. And if it's a shortage of drivers, get your butt out there and hire drivers. That's the bottom line for me. And I know it might be difficult, but that's the bottom line. There's, there's got to be drivers out there, and this, what are we, in our fourth month of COVID? So anyone in this business knows, or should know, that just because we have an economic slowdown, garbage isn't going to slow down. Families are still going to generate the same amount, if not more, because they're home. So some foresight there would have meant that you were hiring more drivers instead of putting a hiring, a hiring freeze on or letting drivers go. So, yeah, I just think that you're in a difficult position right now, and, but that's part of business.
I don't have any more lights on. I don't know if someone wants to make a motion one way or the other. It's not really necessary if no one wants to. I think it sounds like staff's more looking for direction on this. Is that?
Right. It would have to be the board that would be taking action. Under the contract, it's the county, and the county is defined as the Board of County Commissioners under this agreement. So it would be the board that would have to grant the waiver that they were requesting or the request.
Please, Commissioner Tobias, and then Commissioner Pritchett after.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to continue with the contract that was competitively bid and, and agreed upon by the county with no changes.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, if, if, if you can't do it, you just can't do it. But I agree with Commissioner Lober, that if you can't do it, then there has to be some type of reimbursement to the taxpayers, till you are able to do it. So I, I don't know what that would be. I think that would have to take you sitting down with, with staff, because I don't know how those dollars work out, but I think that is fair. Because you know what? If you just can't, you just can't.
And if you want to make that a motion, Commissioner, I'm happy to second it, to authorize Frank to.
I want to second Commissioner Tobias's motion.
Okay, we have a second on Commissioner Tobias's motion. Commissioner Pritchett, it's up to you. We have that motion, however you want.
Do you want to call their motion first, then?
I'm kind of interested to see what the feeling is as to, as to this other, because that's going to determine really how I'm going to vote on the first one. Yeah, let's, let's call it. Let's, we'll go ahead and call the first mo, the, the first motion that's been made by Commissioner Tobias, seconded by Commissioner Isnardi, essentially to leave the contract as is and not modify it, although I'm happy to entertain Commissioner Pritchett's potential motion afterward. So as to the, the motion as stated by Commissioner Tobias and seconded by Commissioner Isnardi, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Say nay.
Nay.
All right, passes 4-1 with Commissioner Pritchett and the negative. Now, Commissioner Pritchett, you had a, a second or a potential motion coming up, I believe, to authorize Mr. Abate to negotiate with Waste Management?
Won't that just negate?
Won't that just negate what we just motioned on?
Potentially. But I'll go ahead and second it anyway. I think we, we just needed to clear the motion off the table, essentially.
Okay. Well, I want, I want to make a motion that we get with Waste Management and get some kind of reimbursement back to the county for the potential loss of services.
Okay, and that would, that would entail Mr. Abate?
They'd have to figure out the numbers. Yeah.
Okay. Did I see a light? Commissioner Tobias, is that an old light?
No, no, Mr. Chair.
All right, we'll hear from you, then Commissioners Nardi.
Thanks. First of all, these two things are mutually exclusive. The contract, as I asked Ms. Bentley, and I'd be more than willing to answer again, contemplates this, and there are determinations on, on this. I, I also asked staff about that calculation that Commissioner Pritchett discussed, and it's extremely complicated. I'm sure Yuri can discuss just how difficult it would be. And actually, the number is not as high as you potentially, is what it was explained to me. However, I imagine the volume of calls that you would get from the constituents would be large. So, yes, your recycling wasn't picked up, but goodness gracious, you're going to get a 30-cent credit on. That is probably not the phone call that you probably want to have with your constituents. So, again, I thought the exact same thing as you did, until I spoke with counsel who said that this was already contemplated. It's in the contract. And then when I spoke with staff and found out that it would be a very small amount, and it was not a conversation I wanted to have with my constituents about saving 30 cents. So it's not anything, I walked down that same path you did. I just unfortunately came up with it. I will be voting against it.
Yeah, I'll, Commissioner Pritchett, I'll leave it to you. If you'd like, I'm happy to second it.
Can I speak? I might like to put it for a while.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I'm not going to support it, only because the, the obligation was the recycle, recyclables. The obligation is to keep that stuff out of our landfill. The obligation is to the contract. So anything that deviates from that, whether they negotiate a price or not, because you can't put a price tag on the environmental impacts of that. You can't put a price tag on people's compliance with future recycling. You can't, you just can't. So this is the contract. This is the obligation of, of the large corporation that, that bid on this, and this is what I expect. This is what I expect from my residents. This is what we agree to. So I won't be supporting anything that deviates from the contract. Not unless this board does something different in the future that has to benefit our constituents. In this regard, I'm not going to support it.
Mr. Pritchett, what would you like?
I agree completely with that. As a matter of fact, I, I don't like the thought of not doing recyclables. I mean, that's very important to recycle. But if they don't do this, are we going to breach a contract? And would the contract's void, and we have to go back to it? And then I have the concern is if they void the contract, we end up with nobody getting their garbage picked up for months. So those are all the things that I'm, I'm weighing right now. So I don't know. I, I, I'm guessing you would have come here sincerely, like, we can't make this happen. But as, as far as I'm concerned, is, is doing this, this job, I think it's very important. So that's what I'm trying to weigh right now. If, if we run into a risk of a breach of contract, and then we have nobody picking up garbage, because they just can't do it, then I, I don't know what to do with this.
Ms. Bentley, do you want to talk about one? Or do you want me to give it a shot?
Well, there are liquidated damages provided for in the contract. There are also breach provisions if it reaches that particular level of violation. That, that's something you're going to have to deal with as it comes along. We don't know what the future is going to bring.
Right, Commissioner Nardi?
And quite honestly, I, I, they're asking for 30 days of, of relief with this recycling thing. And this billion-dollar corporation's probably not likely to go under based on a 30 days if we tell them no. They're just going to have to figure it out. I mean, they're not going to go under. They're not going to ruin the reputation across the state and across the country by negate, or reneging on the contract. It just won't happen. I mean, I don't, I don't believe that for a second. If they're asking for 30 days, if they were going bankrupt and, and falling apart all over the country, I would say yes. But if they're asking for 30 days of relief, it's not going to bankrupt their company. They can, they can hold true to their contract, at least I believe. I don't think that they would burn that bridge. So I don't think we're at risk of trash piling up in the streets. I think they'll do their job. And they'll, they'll, you know, commit to the terms of the contract.
Mr. Abate, did you have anything, sir?
The only thing I would add is that with the board motion to continue under the existing contract, as it was contemplated, there is the liquidated damages clause, which speaks to the issue of unsatisfied customers that have a valid complaint. And if the trash is not picked up on the scheduled date, that would be a valid complaint. And so there, there are specific liquidated damages of how much per every incident that they would be penalized. So that's probably, not, not probably, but we always spoke to Yuri, that would be the path. And, and, and we work with Waste Management every month. They keep a record of the complaints that they get. We get our own complaints, but we can also ask for the records of what dates that their routes were not completed, and how many residents, because they know that amount, how many residents didn't get completed on that date. And so they will have the financial incentive to try to be doing that as quickly as they can, if that's, and that would be consistent with the motion that the board's already passed. So that's how we would proceed to continue doing it, because it is true. There is, you know, there's other things in the contract in terms of them not performing performance guarantees, but we're not really in a position, because we just rebid the contract with them. It's a, it's a seven-year contract. We don't have, there weren't any other, there wasn't another major bidder that I think we could go to now to do anything with. So, you know, we're in that difficult position, but, you know, with what the board has, action the board has taken, we will just continue implementing the current contract, and we will look at the provisions in that contract that best address this issue, and that's how we'll proceed.
Okay. I, you know what? I didn't have enough time to study this out, but thank you for, for giving me that information. Commissioner Tobias, thank you for that, too. So I think the first motion was a good one, because you're going to do your best, because instead of having to reimburse the county, there's going to be penalty for it, too. And if you just can't get it, it's going to cost you. So it's going to be to your advantage to get it done. So I, I think I wish I would have voted with the first motion now, so.
So I'll consider your second, the second motion withdrawn, Commissioner Pritchett?
Yes, sir.
All right, Commissioner Tobias?
Yep. Thank you, Chair.
Yes, sir.
Thank you to Barron's here as well. Waste Management had revenue of $17.5 billion last year, operating profit, that is before interest and depreciation, of $1.14 billion. So just to give you a heads up as far as the profitability of, of, of this company, I don't think it'll be going under anytime soon.
All right, anything further for the commission?
Thank you for all you did though.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. And Commissioners Nardi, to your point, we will figure it out. And I, I want to thank you all for considering our request. We absolutely respect and appreciate your feedback. So, so thank you all very much.
Good to hear.
Thank you. You as well.
Thank you. All right, anything further, Mr. Abate?
No, that's it for my reports.
Ms. Bentley?
No report.
Mr. Pritchett?
Yeah, just a, a couple notes. You know, as we're moving forward, getting ready for the, for the budget, this amount of money right now that we're giving out as federal funds coming in, the county is not going to have surplus tax funds. If anything, I already know from meeting with the county manager, we're going to have an $8 million hit in sales tax alone, which means lagoon and everything. So the budget is gonna, is going to be taking a hit. So as we're moving forward, you know, I, I'm not going to be wanting to, to up anything right now. Maybe if we can keep status quo, I don't know. But we aren't the federal government that can just go print more funds. You know, we have to tax you guys and then use that money to pay for things. And when everybody's being hit so hard, and, you know, as far as their economy, I'm not willing to make them spend more on taxes as we're, as we're trying to get through things. So, and a couple of thoughts as we're doing this. Someone had brought up the amount of money we gave to Ian to spend. Well, we added another $4 million to that last meeting, so we doubled it. So there's $8.4 million that we're, we're giving to people for housing and food that was done last meeting. And as far as small businesses, you get people working. They don't have to have unemployment. They don't have to have all those other helps, are able to take care of themselves. So I never apologize for getting businesses up and running, because it's the better thing to do, because it's better to work and do all those things to take care of your family. It makes you feel good about yourself. So that's always a good thing. So I just wanted to mention those few things. So this is a, a tough job we have ahead of us this budget season, but I am, I think you guys are the, are the ones to do this. But there is not going to be a lot of extra funds, because I don't think anybody up here is willing to tax anybody any more money, because you guys are already having a hard time.
Appreciate you, Mr. Pritchett. I'll, I'll just add to that as well. If, if we have to spend some reasonable, being the operative word, amount out of our reserves for certain departments in order to make things float without having a budget in, or pardon me, without having a tax increase next year, we may have to do that. I, I think we're going to have to get creative over the next year, potentially two years, to float by and allow things to recover some before we, we really are back on track. Beyond that, I just want to apologize to Commissioners Nardi. I know I, I neglected the call on her. When her light was on, I, I went from Commissioner Tobias and then forgot that she was there. So my apologies. I didn't mean to skip you at all.
Oh, that's okay.
If, if I do in the future, please just, you know, give me a nudge or, you know, throw something, preferably nothing sharp or metallic.
Lucky you said something, because the pen was headed your way. No, I was kidding.
It looked sharp. All right, Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wish I'd thought about this before, but I got a text. It appears as though that some of our constitutional offices have, have been laying off folks. I certainly would hope that these folks would be given the opportunity to review those small business loans, especially if they had the area of expertise that was associated with that. While the chamber may be a worthy organization, people that have been working for the county, be it constitutional officers or not, I think should be given an equal shot, if not a, a better shot. I, my office has been, and this is for our next meeting, I plan to have another request to advertise, but it's a little bit complicated, and before I got it drafted out, I wanted to see if there was the sentiment of the board and to what direction you were interested in going, if any. I have briefly spoken with the sheriff about this, and conceptually, he seemed to be in agreeance. It is dealing with sex offenders. Our, our code does not include a restriction for sex offenders entering private businesses that cater to children. This has been a quickly growing industry in the past few years, as we've seen of these businesses open up, the jump houses, the ones that cater directly to, to kids. U Jump is an example. I picked up a number of them, though, in, in each one of our districts. These districts are essentially indoor playgrounds, and the code doesn't capture them. So there are a couple ways, I think, to fix this, and we have to balance state statute along with a myriad of other ordinances that are in place. So the ones that I have, ones that staff came up with and been working in concert with the county attorney's office, there are a couple options. I'm open to any of these that we can keep our most vulnerable safe. But option one would be to create an opt-in registry of businesses who would self-certify that a primary aspect of their business involves children. And that would then keep sex offenders away from those locations. Incorporate into our definition of parks language used in state statute, which would capture these businesses, at least in theory. And a third one, incorporate the state's definition of parks into our code, but allow for an opt-out provision for those businesses that do not want to exclude sex offenders. So everyone's in unless they decide they want to do away with it. Probably, well, not use, but it was an option there. So I, I intended to include these options in a little more detail for legislative intent and permission to advertise at the next meeting. But before I did that and before we delve into one, is, is this an area that you're interested in getting involved in? And if so, do any of these options contemplated work? Or do you have other options that, for one reason or another, you know, I or my staff did not see?
Commissioner, I, I would just suggest something to consider, and I, I really didn't expect this to come up. So I'm, I'm not sure where I would be with respect to it either way. But you may want to look, instead of just sex offenders, looking at a narrower subset, like sexual predators. There's a difference in the statutory definition. One of the groups is far more concerning to me than the other. That's kind of an overarching classification. I might support it with respect to sex predators, and I'm not saying I wouldn't with sex offenders. I just don't know, because it's something that frankly, haven't had the time to think about. But I would just encourage folks to do a little recon with respect to the difference between the two, so that we can have a, a good discussion. Commissioners Nardi? And then Commissioner Pritchett after.
Yeah, I'm definitely interested. And there is a difference between the two, because when I was at the city of Palm Bay, we spent some extensive time studying those issues. And one of the items, if I would have thought my board at the time would have supported it, is we actually considered signage at people's houses for sexual predators, where it would identify to everybody that lived, drove by, or in a neighborhood that there was a sexual predator that lived on, at the site. And there is a very clear difference between the two. It's usually like repeat. It's usually a certain age. There's, there's several criteria, but that tells you the worst of worst of society that would injure, you know, minor children like that. But definitely something I'm interested in. I mean, not just as a mom, but as a, as somebody who would, you know, a lot of children in my family and, and, you know, personal family members with experiences with sexual abuse, and, and I, I think that would be wonderful. I'd be, I would just encourage you to get those numbers, the sexual predator numbers versus the sexual offender numbers. They're pretty easy to get for the county, countywide, to see how many people it impacts. Because I think people would be shocked. I think people would be shocked to see how many sex offenders are in the county.
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I just wanted to weigh in on this issue. I'm kind of surprised by it, as you are, but it's an important topic. And I would also encourage Commissioner Tobias to look at the differences between the offenders and the predators. And I'll just give you one example of a young man that I know of, that he was 18 and his girlfriend was a few weeks short of 16. And I won't get into the details, but they, they were intimate, and he was charged with being a sex offender. And they wound up getting engaged later. But that title, that sex offender, is with him probably for as long as he lives. So there's a vast difference between a predator and a, and a sex offender.
Mr. Chair, the legislature fixed this while I was up there. The basic Romeo and Juliet laws would get into the situation that Commissioner Smith was speaking about. I, I want to provide counting it safer for all children. And if we want to narrow it down, if I'm only going to get to support narrowing it down, by all means, I would, I, I would be not as comfortable doing it. But I think that the loophole is excluding these people from parks is a great idea. But when kids gather in private areas, I, I think that that should have the same protection of the law. And if mirroring it in state statute, it would make things better. I'm, I'm, there were, there were, would you rather have an opt-in and opt-out mirroring state? Are there any, you know, present all three?
If you, if you do it the form of an opt-in, and I'm, I'm not being sarcastic, at least I'm not trying to be, you would at least not be regulating businesses that aren't opting in to be regulated. So in that sense, if, if they don't want to deal with this, and they say, oh, well, come on down, sexual predators, they still have the ability to do that if we do it as an opt-in. Now, I, I think that's kind of spooky. I, I wouldn't personally care for that, but it's, it seems to obviate that potential issue.
The, the issue is the definition of what a type of business that caters to children. There really is no good state definition that, that does that, and that's, that's what this, you know, I, I wish it was that simple, but unfortunately, that's why they opt-in, opt-out. And again, any of these makes the situation better. Some of, some of these go further than others, and I, I'm, I'm supportive of any, but just wanted, before we went through, you know, the process of, of putting the ordinance together, because it is a little bit more complicated than alcohol, because it deals with federal as well as state law, wanted to see where, what your thoughts were, obviously being compliance with Sunshine.
Commissioner Pritchett, you have something?
Yeah, I got a question. So the difference between the predator and offender, does the offender end up having this on his record where he's told he's not allowed in parks after?
It depends on, on what we pass, if anything.
Well, right now, the people that have certain criteria, they're not allowed anywhere near parks for children, our schools or anything. So what's the criteria with that? Because that's what I, I agree with, with him. If they already know they're not allowed in parks or in schools or places where there's children, then it totally makes sense to me. If there's businesses that cater to children, they're not allowed there either.
I can bring you a specific list, so I'm not.
That would be wonderful.
Yeah, I can do that for the next meeting. I'm happy to do that.
Okay, that, I, I agree. That's, that's a good thought, and I didn't think about that. So that's good.
Anything further? Commissioner Tobias?
No, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Smith? All right, Commissioner Smith?
I report.
Commissioner Riznardi? All right, we are at 4:29. We have three items listed under H's in hotel public hearings, H1, 2, and 3. We can't address them until 5 o'clock, so I'm going to go ahead and recess it at 4:29. We will reconvene at 5 o'clock, hopefully on the dot and get things rolling. Thank you all. All right, we're reconvened at 5 on the dot. So we have got only item H's in hotel left. There are three on here, H1, H2, and H3. H1, petition to vacate public utility and drainage easement, 6630 Dallas Ave, Port St. John Unit 2, Platbook 14, Page 48, Cocoa. Applicants Carolyn M. Campbell, District 1. The second one, H2, will be petition to vacate public utility and drainage easement, Triple X Brush Lane, Lauralea Estates, Platbook 24, Page 154, Cocoa. Terry Millard Hart, D2. And last but not least, H3, petition to vacate public drainage easement, official records book 3217, Page 2329, Section 19, Township 26 South, Range 37 East, Melbourne, Viennings Palm Bay Investment LLC, D4. Ms. Bentley, is that sufficient?
That's plenty.
All right. May I have a motion in aggregate to approve H1, H2, and H3?
Oh, together? So moved.
All right. A motion from Mr. Pritchett. I'll go ahead and second that. All in favor of approval, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, Commissioner Smith, are you still on, sir? All right, passes 4-0.
I'm here.
Okay, all right. Before I say passes 4-0, hang on, I may need to do over. You voted in favor of the approval of all the H items?
I did.
Passes 5-0, even better. Anything further before we adjourn? All right, 5:01, we're adjourned. Thank you, guys.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program's sponsor and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television and the program's sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.